Good evening. Welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Before we start our meeting, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask that we take a moment to recognize the many communities and families across North Carolina, South Carolina, and other states that have been devastated by Hurricane Florence over the past week and which will continue to be impacted by extreme flooding, the extreme flooding of many rivers. Sixteen rivers in North Carolina are now at major flood levels. At least 26 people in North Carolina alone have died due to the storm. Twelve hundred roads across North Carolina remain closed. Three hundred forty-three thousand families and businesses remain without power. A quarter of the crops in farmers' fields have suffered damage, and 10,000 people remain in shelters across our state. Let us have a moment of silence to offer prayers for the people who have been hurt by this storm and to reflect on how we can be of service to others during this time. Let us also reflect on how we can demonstrate our appreciation to the thousands of emergency rescue personnel and public safety officers and others who have saved hundreds of lives this past week. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to announce that parking validation and bus passes are now available for county commission meetings. Anyone who is at the meeting this evening who is using a county parking facility or used transit services to come to this meeting can secure validation from the county security personnel who are here with us this evening. So feel free to talk to them on the way out if you need validation for parking or transit. Now, let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the office of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today?" All right. "Seeing none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." All right. We now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the agenda as published?
So moved.
All right. There's a motion in second to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of this agenda as published. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It is unanimous. All right. Under good news, we have Rachel Bliss with us this evening, and I'd like to invite Rachel to come up to the podium and share some information about International Day of Peace.
If I'm inviting Ellie Halsey to come up with me as well.
Okay.
It's Cole Flanner.
Great.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Mr. Newman said, I'm Rachel Bliss, and I'm with WNC for Peace and Veterans for Peace 099. And we're here to invite you to our International Day of Peace celebration. That's going to be September 21st, this Friday, at 11:30 a.m. over at our new garden, the Elder and Sage Community Garden on Page Avenue. This year, we're going to dedicate a new peace pole. It'll be the first one that's on public property here in Asheville. And it has made peace prevail on earth in four languages: Cherokee, Korean, English, and one more was Spanish. And we'd love to have you come and be there at our dedication. We'll also be naming our peacemakers of the year. They are a young married couple. She is American-born, Rachel Joy, and her husband is Joseph Nachla. They're both with Christian peacemakers, and they have been promoting peace between Israel and Palestine in our own area. I would say I'm very disappointed that your commission was not able to approve our proclamation designating Peace Day on Friday. We did have some good news, though. The city of Asheville did proclaim that day as Peace Day. And also our state delegation, Susan Fisher and Brian Turner and John Egger, and I think the other one is McGrady, I'll find out Friday, they all as well signed the proclamation. But we will go ahead and celebrate International Day of Peace. But I also want you to be aware that, you know, when we do not have peace, when we put most of our focus on war and the military, much of our taxes go to pay for that. Two-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars of our tax money has gone to the military just from Buncombe County. So please let us remember the good news of peace and do all we can to bring about peace by being more insistent at the federal levels that we keep more of that money here at home for Buncombe County in case we're ever faced with an emergency like we had with Hurricane Florence this past weekend. We need better infrastructure. We need to be prepared to rebuild infrastructure. We need to have better educational opportunities for our young people. All that would be possible if we would put our minds and our work on peace instead of war. And thank you. I want to also have the many groups, representatives of the many groups who went ahead and approved of supporting our proclamation. Would you please stand? Over 23 groups right here in Buncombe County wanted to have this proclamation signed, and we're all sorry that you were not able to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
That was the good news.
Okay.
My name is Dr. Halsey. I have worked, lived, and paid taxes in Buncombe County for almost 30 years. And I just wanted to say that I'm very disappointed that you have chosen politically correct verbiage over morally correct action regarding supporting International Day of Peace. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And I would just, you know, I would, I think this was communicated through the staff, but if you, you know, we have done a resolution in the past, and if you'd like for us to consider it in the future, I'd encourage you to share it with the Board a little bit earlier than this year so everyone can look at it and if, you know, and consider that. But it kind of came in somewhat late, and I don't think it would have been a consensus item of the Board. So for that reason, we appreciate you being here to just directly share your perspective on International Day of Peace. Thank you. All right. We now come to the county manager's report. Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, I've got several things just to update y'all on. Thank you. The first one is on the Lee Walker Heights Development Project. You recall y'all approved that back, I believe, in April this year, and the county was going to contribute up to $4.2 million towards that project. The payments were made over three years, and the first promised payment is 2.5 million. And we had a meeting with them recently, and they made us aware that they'll probably have everything ready to go on that and make that request probably in the next couple of months. So I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. The money is already budgeted for that. We do need a decision on sending two commissioners and one legal staff to Chicago on September 26th for a meeting of the opioid class action lawsuit against the big pharma companies. We're part of that consortium, and they will pay the travel and lodging for that. But they prefer to have two commissioners and one of our legal staff attend that meeting, and they're recommending, Mr. Chairman, that you be one of those commissioners if you can make that.
What are the dates on it again?
It's September 26th is the meeting. In all likelihood, we would need to get a flight the night before, get you in the night before.
Okay. I'll look at it in my calendar. If I can't, then if there are other commissioners who are interested, please let me know pretty soon because it's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up. So, and I think Brandon Freeman is going to go from your staff. Is that right, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we do need to try to nail that down as soon as possible. Just another update. We'll be bidding out shortly the parking services contract to manage our multiple surface lots and also the new parking deck at the Department of Health and Human Services building on Cox Avenue. The current agreement at 164 College Street, right next door, has several more years to run, so we're not able to put that into the bid package. But what we'd like to do is try to match up those ending dates so that in the future, you would handle all three contracts at one time or could combine them into one contract. Currently, the surface lots had a contract until March, and that expired. They've been operating under the same terms and conditions on a month-by-month basis, but we need to get that bid out. And they're doing the parking deck the same as they're doing the 164 College Street parking deck now. So we've had good pricing, but we need to go ahead and nail it down and get it bid out and let competition in on this bid. We've submitted the formal application to the Tourism Development Authority for a $6 million project at the sports park in Inca Candler, and will, our staff will also present it to the TDA on September 27th. We got the $2,088,740.70 settlement check with the insurance companies over the whole-life insurance policies. We got that last Monday and, of course, have deposited that. And prior to doing that, the chairman executed the original of the settlement agreement, and so we have all of that in place. All of that is now done. We've also executed the original of the agreement with Mr. Slavin over the county manager search contract for him, and he has begun work there. The last thing I wanted to mention to you is we've executed this past week a lease agreement for solid waste on a loader, which is $37,632.40 annually, and an excavator, which is $54,014 annually. These are for the new transfer station. I think for those of you who are able to make it to the ribbon cutting there, you saw those two pieces of equipment out there. They are substantial pieces of equipment, and this is a five-year lease on this, on this equipment. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. We now come to new business, and the first item there is the FY19 Budget Amendment Summary. And Mr. Wood, are you leading this or?
I'm not sure. You want to go ahead and do that, Jennifer? This is the lady who knows it all, not me.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want to say this has, this has been in the consent agenda until now, and we've moved it out quite often, and so I'm glad to see this as part of the main.
Thank you. My feeling is you ought to be able, you ought to have detailed information on each one.
Yeah, I think so. And it's, it's good for the public to have it. It's good, of course, we have it, you know, a few days early, but it's good. It's good to have it in the main meeting. Thanks.
So, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Jennifer Chilton, Budget Manager, and I'll be happy to go over these one by one if that's your preference. So, beginning with the first budget amendment in the summary, references the general fund. These are identified carryforwards, which means that there were dollars that would have been budgeted in the previous fiscal year, and I need to carry those dollars forward into fiscal year 19 for various reasons. The cooperative extension is related to revenues in which they generate and spend and program revenues, and it's restricted. The soil conservation will be for the same reason. So restricted program revenues that have gone unspent in fiscal year 18 and need to be available for spending in fiscal year 19. For general services, there was a bus shelter project which was under contract and began in fiscal year 18, and due to circumstances beyond the control of the department related to the vendor, they were unable to complete that project, and the request is to carry those remaining dollars forward for spending in fiscal year 19. All right. Any questions related to that?
I have a process question. If, are we going to vote on all of these amendments together or as one motion or separately?
It should be separately. Well, I mean, you can do them all together, but if you have any problems with any of them, you may want to pull that one out.
Well, should, okay.
Were we voting on these already, these are in the budget? On the last thing, the bus deal through the general services, how much money were we looking at there?
So, so the unspent dollars is the, the request to carry forward is $6,025.
Okay. I thought we was talking a lot of money, no?
No.
No. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So, I guess just again, go back to the process. Should we vote on each of these after there's an explanation and to approve them or wait till we're done and then approve them together?
I would approve them individually if you're going to have discussion at this point on each one.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we just have a short explanation and then go ahead and vote on that one, and then we'll go on to the next one. So, is there a motion to approve, and how should this be phrased? I mean, we could just say from the staff report, the appropriated fund balance, cooperative extension, soil conservation, general services 7,000, cooperative extension 6060, which adds up to $15,836. Is that sufficient to describe the first group? Okay. Is there a motion to approve, to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You know what? I'm changing my mind because here's the thing is we need to take public comment on this. So why don't we, why don't we go through all of them, and then we're going to ask for public comment on any of them, and then we'll go through and we'll vote on, vote on each group. So let's just keep, keep going with the presentation.
Okay, great.
All right. Sorry about that.
That's fine. So in your summary, so the second general fund budget amendment request will be related to the number, Capital Projects Fund 341. So those are related because it involves two funds. So I'll try to explain that as, as clearly as possible. So last meeting on September the 4th, the Board voted to approve six additional school resource officer positions in conjunction with grant funding due to be received from Buncombe County schools. So in the general fund budget amendment, you see the additional revenue of $185,957 added to the general fund in anticipation of receiving that from Buncombe County schools. And then you see the expenditures associated with the school resource officer salary and fringe and operating costs to the various categories listed. So the revenue due to be received to balance that amendment at $419,871 is a transfer from the capital fund referenced later in your summary. That is where the savings, your capital fund savings that you discussed last meeting and approved in the amount of $422,408 resides. So $233,914 is needed in the general fund for salary and fringe and operating, and then we would request that $180,000 remain in the capital fund but be transferred to the fleet for the purchase of six vehicles for those school resource officers.
Okay. And again, we're going to come back to this, but just for clarification when we get to this, the request on that item is for a budget amendment totaling $419,871?
In the, in the general fund, there is no new appropriated funds. So the additional revenue that's due to be received from the schools and the grant, so it's via the grant, and then the savings in which you already have in the capital fund that we, we addressed and, or you saw last week in, in your contingency, in the amount of $422,408, that will make up the balance of what's needed between the fleet requirement for the purchase of the vehicles and the salary and fringe and operating for those associated officers.
If y'all remember, you, when we looked at it at the last meeting, this year is higher than next year because we've got to pay for the vehicles and equipping the officers, the six officers this year. That's why there's a higher amount this year. Next year, all we'd be doing is paying for their salaries and fringe benefits.
Excuse me on that, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brandon.
Yes, sir.
On that, right now, we have vehicles in the sheriff's department.
Right.
That people that are retired from the sheriff's department are driving. So we need to figure out a way to move some of these around without having to buy some new stuff.
Well, typically, the school resource officers get the older vehicles, and then the newer ones are placed into the patrol fleet.
Understand.
You're saying don't buy these vehicles?
Right now, let's see what vehicles we have in stock because we have a lot of retired sheriff's officers driving vehicles home today. And see what we can, they're used, and yeah, they would be in used vehicles, and we just need to see, we just don't need to add, add to the fleet if we don't have to at the present time. That's the only thing I have to say. Okay. So we, we voted on this already.
Yeah.
Okay. So we voted on this already.
Right.
So this is, this, what this is, is a budget amendment explaining the vote. This is a, this is how accounting goes through and explains this in the distribution of the funds.
It is the appropriation of the funding.
Of a vote we've already taken, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Of a vote we've already taken.
You've taken it, and what we're doing now is, based on that vote, we've come back and told you where we're moving the money to and from in order to finance what you voted for.
Okay. So, right. And so that's, what's important of this is it, is it gives clarity to the public on exactly where these funds are coming from, exactly, you know, how, how this vote is being funded.
Right.
Right?
And if, and if you recall, you had some savings in your Capital Projects Fund, and at the last meeting, we recommended that you move that into contingency. So in the Capital Projects Fund, so now we're using some of that because this was an unanticipated expenditure.
So the vote tonight just means that we accept the, the accounting.
That's right.
Procedure.
And if you put the, if you put the money there, I mean, if you want me to talk with the sheriff about can he cut back on the number of cars, we can certainly do that before we spend the money. But I would still recommend you go ahead and move the money in case we need it. But if we don't, then, you know, we won't spend it.
I have to agree with that.
Okay.
Just a quick clarifying question. I think you might have reviewed this, but just one more time for my sake. So last, when we voted on, or when the vote was taken on this, the county contribution needed in year one was $483,073, and the budget amendment reflects $419,871. Could you, one more time, just walk through the differential there?
So the.
That money's coming from the school, isn't it? Go ahead.
So I do believe that Mr. Wood did prepare, and that would have been an annualized rate. But in the preparation of the budget amendment, I used a pro-rata figure for the salary and fringe because we would estimate only 21 remaining pay periods in the fiscal year.
So that difference, okay.
Yeah. That is your accounting answer right there.
Thank you.
What you looking for.
All right, great.
All right. And again, when we come back to this, if there's a motion made stating a request for approval for the allocation of funding for the six additional school resource officer positions totaling $419,871, that would accomplish this one. Okay. All right. Next.
Sure. So the third budget amendment in the summary for the general fund references the request for an inter-fund transfer with an offsetting reduction in appropriated fund balance. The related amendment in Fund 480, which is the Health, Employment, Property, and Casualty Fund, you heard Mr. Wood speak to the receipt of $2,088,741 as a result of the settlement from Guardian Life. So the amendment for the Health, Employment, Property, and Casualty Fund receives that revenue and has an offsetting request to transfer an amount of $1,863,907 to the general fund, which is an amount that is equivalent to the education funding that you increased last, last meeting. So this basically replaces the use of your additional appropriated fund balance for education back to the general fund. The balance of those dollars, $224,834, we were, we are requesting that we leave that balance in the Health, Employment, Property, and Casualty Fund and identify those as dollars for increased expenses related to retirees' expenses that were unanticipated for fiscal year 19. Those are, those are expenses that we need to pay to the retirement system on pat, on behalf of retirees that are over the dollar amount that we would have anticipated in fiscal year 19.
So the $2 million allowed us to be able to fund the, the rest of the school without going into fund balance.
That's correct.
Make it.
And so what we're doing is reduce, is not using fund balance on that.
Awesome.
And then the rest of it, we're putting into just what she said to offset some of the additional cost on the retirement system.
All right.
All right. So moving on, and, and I do just want to clarify, Mr. Wood, so there was the discussion of an, of an additional budget amendment. Did that get added to the agenda? Okay, great.
What, what we were advised by our attorneys is, in order to add anything to the agenda, all seven commissioners have to agree, and Ms. Frost couldn't make the meeting tonight.
So we can address that next, next meeting. So moving on to, so we've already discussed the fourth on the budget amendment summary. The fifth on the budget amendment summary is the Solid Waste Capital Projects Fund. This is a request to appropriate some of that. Those are, those are expenses that we need to pay to the retirement system on pat, on behalf of retirees that are over the dollar amount that we would have anticipated in fiscal year 19.
So the $2 million allowed us to be able to, uh, fund the, uh, the rest of the school without going into fund balance?
That's correct.
Make it...
And so what we're doing is reduce, is not using fund balance on that.
Awesome.
And then the rest of it, um, we're putting into, um, uh, just what she said to offset some of the additional cost on the, um, retirement system.
All right.
So moving on, and, and I do just want to clarify, Mr. Wood, so there was the discussion of an, of an additional budget amendment, did that get added to the agenda? Okay, great.
Uh, what, what we were advised by our attorneys is, in order to add anything to the agenda, all seven commissioners have to agree, and Ms. Frost couldn't make the meeting tonight.
Great, so we can address that next, next meeting. Um, so moving on to, um, so we've already discussed the fourth, um, on the budget amendment summary. The fifth on the budget amendment summary is the Solid Waste Capital Projects Fund. This is a request to appropriate some of that fund's addition, that fund's appropriated fund balance, or their fund balance. They are a self-covering fund, an enterprise fund. They have a need...
Yep, just a moment, um, I'm not seeing that item in the packet.
Thought that was...
Am I missing it?
It's, I mean, it's on the, um, I'm not looking in there.
If, we added that to the one online before the deadline. Lamar did that, I think, a couple of days ago.
Okay.
We do need to do that one, uh, that one's very time-sensitive.
Okay.
And since it's on the, uh, one we published, I think we're okay on that.
Okay, I think it's, it's, um, there's two different documents, um, on the website. I think it's on one of them, but not the other, so I think it is, it's published.
The $4,700 one, we're gonna delay till the next meeting, but this one is sensitive, time-sensitive.
All right. All right.
Okay.
Please continue.
Um, so the Buncombe County Solid Waste, um, Department is currently in the process of completing construction on the Phase 6 Construction and Demolition Landfill Project. It was underway due to some legal, um, activity. The contract with the prime engineering firm's been terminated. This is to appropriate dollars in order to pay, um, the newly contracted, um, engineers to fulfill the work that is needed.
Okay, and this, and this is for, and is for $450,000?
$145,000.
It's $145,519.
The one above it.
Okay, thank you. $145,519?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right.
All right. So the next item for the budget summary, um, is related to the Grants Project Fund. The, um, Buncombe County has received an award totaling $450,000 from the Office of Violence Against Women under the Improving Criminal Justice Responses Program. Um, so these are additional dollars that will, um, assist with continuing services for the Buncombe County Family Justice Center. It will provide, um, continued intake and front desk services, so funding for, um, those, um, salaries, and training on response to strangulation cases, and equipment to improve accessibility for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. There is no local grant match required.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that when you do this budget amendment, you also include in the, uh, motion that you are approving, uh, receipt of the grant. You know, you made an application for it, but we need to formally accept this grant.
On the Grants Project Fund item?
Yeah, the four fifty.
Okay. All right.
All right. Number seven on your budget amendment summary, related to the Inmate Commissary Fund. So again, inmate commissary, um, is a, um, self-covering fund. In fiscal year 18, um, there was the plan to purchase a full-body scanner, and, um, since that time, uh, the county has been working with the state to obtain the proper waiver and compliance document, documentation needed. The intent was to purchase that full-body scanner in fiscal year 18. However, we were unable to do so, so we are requesting that the budget for these, this expenditure, um, be brought into the budget of the inmate commissary fund for fiscal year 19, and it will, um, come from that fund's fund balance. So didn't get spent in 18, just need to appropriate it in 19 to use.
Okay.
And we've addressed the last one, the last budget amendment, um, related to the Health Employment Property and Casualty Fund earlier.
Okay, um, any questions at this time? Let's, um, so we're gonna have a total of seven different, uh, budget amendment-related votes. Uh, let's open it up to public comment. Are there any, um, members of the public who'd want to comment on any of these proposed items? Mr. Yeldon?
Since you're gonna lump them all together, I'm gonna comment on all of them together. Any of you see the movie, uh, The Girl That Was Possessed by the Devil? What was her head doing? That's what my head was doing during that whole presentation. Now, if you're a accountant, or you live this stuff, may have followed it. But if you don't live this stuff day-to-day, it's gobbledegook. And it can all be solved by putting the budget on the internet by line item, and when you make an enter transfer fund from one line item to another line item, all you have to do is show that. And then you've got it. And I'm gonna preach that till I die, or you all do it. Because that will communicate to us right here. I got through reading that whole page, thirty-some pages. And from the looks of it, we're gonna be seven or eight million dollar short come next year. Well, if you go back to 2020 and make some phone calls to Bivard, North Carolina, and to South Carolina, and some of you have those names, and I know who I gave them to, if you'll make those calls, you'll find out where the millions have been going since 20 years ago, when that slimeball consultant came to work for Buncombe County. And yeah, the money's gone. Also, I'd like to know, as a taxpayer, because we've shuffled some money here to the school system, and I told you all at one time, the school system dumped their trash in the landfill free of charge. I'd like to know how much money the school system is getting, total, period. I mean, that's what I'm concerned in. So I, I compliment you on trying to tell us what you're doing, but it's a whole lot simpler. Because if I ran my checkbook like what I just heard, I wouldn't know what my balance was, I wouldn't know what was coming in, and I wouldn't know where it was going. And I'd be hoping and praying that it would work out. So I strongly suggest that you go to put that budget on the internet by line item, and when money comes out of it, we know where that money goes for what, and when it comes in, we know where it came from. And it's so simple to say, enter transfer fund from gobbledegook. Because that's right, the landfill is an enterprise fund. It generates cash.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Hi Sheriff Finn Duncan, thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just came over to make a correction. I'd heard Commissioner Fryer say something about that we have retired folks from the sheriff's office driving vehicles, taking them home. Uh, that's not correct. We've got two individuals who were retired, came back as contract employees, one works with the cop sting project, the other works with doing our background checks. They are both part-time employees, but they both have an older, older vehicles, they're both 150,000 miles plus. With the assignment we gave them, they have to have a vehicle to drive, so they'd have to have access to those vehicles, but we do allow them to take those vehicles home, and they're older vehicles in the fleet, and there's two of them. So I just wanted to make that clear before you guys voted on, on that particular budget amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry, no, the, you can go next, okay?
I just wanted to say, since it was a new practice, I didn't get a whole lot out of it. The city of Asheville is quite competent at, um, you know, for years, they've been putting budget amendments on the agenda, and people at home can look at the two pages, and you, I'm not really good at doing accounting, you know, spreadsheets in my head while I'm sitting here, but, um, I think it would be more productive just to maybe move this back to the consent agenda. I mean, you know, because there's a lot of politically correct language when we were discussing these things during the era of the former county manager. I did have a problem, because all we had was like a budget item, a dollar amount, and like a five-word description, and nobody knew what it was. And when I asked for clarification, I was told I could always take off work if I had a specific question, but there was no way to get a specific question. That was very problematic. I think, I think it should not be too much of a problem to maybe just give us a non-politically correct description of what's going on with the agenda, and then we can just put this on the consent agenda.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to, um, I don't want to be laughed out when I say this. With the changes to the health insurance, I'm a retired, um, DSS employee, and, um, I just wanted to make a statement and ask for consideration that the retired employees should be able to keep the insurance. We don't have the incentive packages that, that active employees have. We don't get the flex spending account. We don't get, um, the cost of living raises. We don't have the longevity benefit, the, the check that we get in, that they get in October. Just asking that you consider allowing the retired employees keep the benefit package that we have now. And I also want to ask what, um, Ms. Chilton said something about, uh, the retired, retiree expenses, what is that?
We'll, if you have a question, we'll, um, ask it, and we'll try to get an answer when you're, when you're done.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to, just ask to be, for that to be considered.
Okay, but just to make sure we are clear on your question, are you referring to, I think, Mr. Wood mentioned that some of the, um, payments to the state came in higher than forecasted, so that we needed to address those? Is that the, is that the question?
That's due to some of the retirements that you had.
I don't know, she, she just made mention that it was for, there was a, um, something out of the $2 million life insurance, it was, a portion of it was going to retiree expenses?
That came in higher than they had budgeted, and it was because of some of the recent retirements.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. So again, we're gonna have seven, um, seven votes.
So can I, let me ask a question, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this, this format, um, began in consent agenda to summarize these entries, and they're entered similar to a balance sheet, is that correct?
Yes.
Expenditures and revenues.
Right.
Okay? And so the purpose of this was to summarize it, to make it, uh, maybe easier to, if somebody that wanted the entire, everything that's being done tonight, okay? But we also had, uh, budget amendments attached to this, correct? Are, are they in here, or did I miss them? And were we, were we just voting on before? See, before, this was in the consent agenda, so when we voted for the consent agenda, it just voted, it just voted for everything. So by pulling it out in the main meeting, which I think is good, um, where we have to decide what's the proper way to vote for them. Now, is there, is there a budget amendment attached to each one of these?
Yes, what she went over was the summary sheet of them, and then you have each budget amendment behind there, and all of that is on, uh, the web. If you click on that item under the agenda, all of that'll come up for you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's under more information, so there's, so what we're doing is voting for each of those budget amendments that's under there. What you went over is a summary, just so that the public would have a one-page summary of everything that's being done tonight. The detail is also there, um, which is, is in the same format. It's, it's a balance sheet format, revenues and expenditures.
And we have worked to, um, provide the summaries of the narrative in a format which is hopefully easily understandable. Um, and, and each of those, where there were correlating funds with amendments, did reference those in the narrative about which were related.
Yeah, and if you go to, if you go to the budget amendments, I mean, they're, they're very, they're very detailed. They're very clear as to what, uh, as to what's in it.
And we're certainly open to any suggestions on, and how you would like to...
It's the first time we've done it this way, so I mean, we can, um, so we're, we're voting on each of these budget amendments separately. I assume that's kind of what's, what we're doing.
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions or comments, um, at a high level before we start going through each one? All right, well, I would just also comment that, um, I think the information that was presented is actually really well organized and, uh, does a great job of, and a lot of is very technical, but I appreciate that there is a, um, you know, a detailed, kind of plain language description of what each of these items is really meant to accomplish. So I, I actually think this is a really good format, and I'm, and I'm glad we're doing it in this meeting, uh, rather than the consent agenda, as Commissioner Belcher said.
So, you know, under the, you know, just for more clarification, because, you know, somebody made a comment about head spinning. My, my head spins when I look at a lot of this, too. That's why I switched from accounting to marketing in, in college. But, um, the $419,000, for example, that will be one of the ones that we'll be voting on, if you, if you pull it up and you look at it, there is a tremendous amount of detail in there, and it explains, uh, down to $400 items. I mean, it explains every penny of it. And I would just like to make a, make a, a statement regarding the online budget, because we've, we've heard that mentioned several times, and I thought we were doing that, that we were actually going to be able to have, you know, the budget online, the, you know, where you could find out, you know, what payments were being made and exactly what was being done. I know we talked through that a long time. Did that, did that kind of slow down, or?
Is Eric here?
So the line item detail budget was posted and made available, um, throughout the last budget planning, um, season.
Okay.
And the, um, current fiscal year 19 adopted budget with that line item detail is available. The online checkbook is, is different.
Okay.
And I know that, um, that has been a work in progress. I'm not certain of an, of an estimated timeline for that.
So, not to put you on the spot tonight, but could, could we get that, you know, maybe the next meeting, could we get, maybe from the county manager, just get a, get a report on that, where we're at, and how that looks?
I'll get with the finance department on that.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right. Let's go ahead and, um, uh, the first one is the, uh, general fund carry forward item in the amount of $15,863.
So I move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the second item, and if I get any of this wrong, please don't hesitate to interrupt and make sure we get this, get all this right. The second item is, uh, related to the school resource officers and related, uh, equipment and personnel. The, uh, item is in the amount of $419,871.
I move it with approval.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The third item is related to the insurance settlement. It's in the amount of $1,863,907.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, the fourth item is related to, uh, solid waste. The amount is $145,519. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number five is related to the Grants Project Fund. The amount is $450,000, and we need, um, and, and the language should also, uh, note that we are accepting the grant on this item. Is there a motion to approve?
So I'll move approval and acceptance of the grant.
Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, item number six is the, related to the inmate commissary fund. The amount is $189,000.
I move it with approval. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, and the final item is on the Health Employment Property and Casualty Fund. The amount is $2,088,741.
I move with approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right. I believe that concludes.
Mr. Chairman, so I don't know if we need to go back, the capital projects fund for 341, even though that was in relation to the school resource officers, that is a separate fund and amendment. I don't know if we need to vote that separately.
Yes, you would need to take that one up.
Where is that at?
It's the 115, 140.
It's the, it's the capital projects fund, 341, for the 413, 914 dollars in total.
Sure did.
For the fleet of $180,000 for the school resource officer vehicles.
Okay. So I'm still a little bit unclear. So we, we, the second item was related to school resource officers was for 419,000.
And that's for the general fund?
Yep.
And so what that does is it appropriates the operating and the salary and fringe and then the receipt of the transfer from the capital fund. And then the other for the capital fund, 341, it budgets.
Skip that.
Okay.
We missed it.
Yes. All right.
Okay. So a question on that. That's not, okay. It's 413,914 total.
So that's, that's the total from the, so that's the total in the capital fund that we need to use. You do have a balance remaining of $8,494 from your 422,408 dollars that you had in savings. So we're asking to use 413,914 dollars.
And that's the way it was presented the other night when we, when we approved it. That's the way it was presented the other night. It was being funded because the money was in the, what, what account was it called?
It's budgetary contingency.
Contingency. That's what I was looking for. That's what was used the other night.
So the, the description on this item, I believe states that it's to budget $180,000 for the purchase of six vehicles for six newly approved school resource officer positions to additionally budget the transfer of 233,914 from the capital fund to the general fund to offset prorated FY 2019 salary and fringe and associated operating costs for six new positions. Can we just make that as a motion?
Second.
That would be great.
Okay. All right. There's a motion for that purpose. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. And we now come to a presentation by the interim manager on fringe benefits, health insurance plan, and beginning the 2020 budget process.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I think there was one additional one that was added, a task order. If y'all recall, when we canceled the contracts with Wiseman, we had gone through a selection process. We were in the process of selecting a new company. And so we have hired SCS to take that place. And what we're doing now is trying to take care of some of that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and Dane, let y'all go through that.
Okay. But just a, just a process question. So I don't see it on the agenda.
It is on more, under more information. It's the last item behind the budget amendments.
Hold on just a second. Let's all go there, check that out.
It starts on page nine.
There it is.
And the way this works is you have a master.
Great.
You have a master contract with this engineer for a three-year period. Then each time that we're going to do a project with them, you do that by approving what's called a task order. And so that's what we're bringing you to, bringing you tonight is a task order for this. So with that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're ready.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Dane Peterson and I'm here representing our solid waste department. And I'm here this evening to request the, this board, approve and execute SCS engineers' task order 19-01. As Mr. Wood alluded to, this is the first task order under the new solid waste comprehensive engineering services contract. And this task order amount is $318,272. And that's related to C and D Phase 6A sale construction engineering work. C and D and Jennifer explained a little bit of that during her presentation, but construction and demolition landfill. So we're, we have a great advantage in our operations that we currently operate an MSW line, subtitle D landfill. And separate from that is the construction demolition landfill. The reason that's such an, such an advantage to us is we're able to expand and extend the life of the MSD, MSW line landfill by separating those material streams out. So it, it certainly works to that effect to, to extend the life of the landfill, which is precious space. This task order will effectively provide a means of paying outstanding invoices owed to sub consultants McGill and BLE. Will also fund the engineering work for the remainder of the project. SCS has been selected as the prime engineer to replace EIC for this project and will continue existing contracts with McGill and BLE as sub consultants for the remainder of the project. This task order captures the work for SCS as the prime engineer, McGill Associates as construction administrator, and BLE as construction quality assurance engineering firm. It's also important to note in a separate contract, Young and McQueen was selected as the grading contractor for the construction, the actual construction of the C and D sub sale. So permits have been issued for this project and work was well underway when, due to legal activity, the contract with the prime engineering firm was terminated. The site had been cleared and grubbed, which I have to throw out a plug to our people. We, we did the clearing and grubbing in-house and saved approximately $40,000. So give, give the people a plug there where we can. And Young, McQueen, following that, had stripped top soil and installed temporary erosion and sedimentation control measures. And however, following the top soil stripping, Young, McQueen had to halt grading work on August 24th of this year due to the fact that we did not have a contract directly with a soil testing or CQA engineering firm because this was terminated with the EIC contract. And, and as, as Mr. Wood alluded to earlier time, it's certainly of the essence on this project. We, several factors are playing into that. We're quickly running, running out of disposal space in our active sale, which is sale five that we're currently working in now. Young, McQueen has been very good to work with throughout this process, but they, they will have to demobilize at some point. They still have equipment on site. We've, we've really tried to, everybody's been trying to work together to, to continue this project and, and try to minimize the impacts. But on the Young, McQueen side, they will have to demobilize at some point if we don't get this pushed forward. And it'd be a $25,000 fee to re-mobilize the contractor back on site. So we're asking for these approvals tonight to keep this critical project moving forward. And wanted to thank McGill. I know Mark Cathy's here this evening, BLE, SCS, and Young and McQueen for working with us again to, to try and minimize these impacts to this project. So I appreciate your time this evening. We'll answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. And thanks for making sure we didn't overlook this item. So we need a motion to approve task order 19-01 to SCS in the amount of $318,272. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I so move.
Further discussion?
I've got a question. What period of time did you say this was for? Like the reimbursable cost? What period of time is this?
The, the project cost preliminary actually trend back all the way to 2015. There's a lot of engineering before any, any shovels are obviously put in the ground. So that, the, the budget actually trends back to 2015 for subsurface evaluations. And during that time, EIC was our engineer of record. So I would say, Mark, probably over the last year, your firm has been incurring those, those costs. Yeah. Yeah. Over the past three months have been the most significant portions of those.
So when I look on there and I see the, the airfare that's on there, which was, you know, was, was, was pretty high, but not, not too bad. That was just the one-time, probably one-time event. Most of that's being handled locally now. Is that correct?
That's correct. And SCS, a lot of their work honestly has been on the front end in trying to.
Yeah. Okay.
Right-size the, the remainder of the project and gather all the moving pieces. They've, they've worked, Ed Hilton and his team have, have worked with BLE and McGill to try to get all these pieces pulled back together and moving forward. Thanks.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, move on to the next item. Well, we took public comment on all of it.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to do this in two parts. I'm going to go through the recommendation that we have, which is about six pages and has about seven slides. After that, I'm going to ask Kurt Euler to come up and Kurt is going to go through the details of the proposals that we're recommending to you. So let me go ahead and get started. And again, as the chairman said, there's no expectation that we're going to vote tonight. This is a lot of information to digest. And our plan is, is that we would schedule it for the next meeting for any action by the board. So that gives you another two weeks to look at it and think about it.
Okay.
So let me just go through this, the memo that I wrote to you. When we hired, when you hired me in June, you asked that I review all of your major financial and human resources policies. You already had amended several financial and human resources policies prior to my hiring. As part of that review, staff is working on a review and rewrite of your purchasing manual, which covers every type of purchase from office supplies to major construction projects. We'll be presenting that rewrite to you within a couple of months. Coupled with the contract tracking software that you previously approved and was presented at the August 28th meeting, this should improve controls over spending and assure the right method of purchases used. In HR policies, you had employed in January Evergreen to conduct a position classification and compensation plan study. They've now completed that and gave you a presentation August 14th on the methodology used. That new plan will be presented to you soon for your review and possible approval. As part of that compensation policy review, we also studied all of your major fringe benefits to see how you compared to the other nine counties that make up the 10 largest population counties in North Carolina. Buncombe, as you know, is the seventh largest population county in North Carolina. When analyzing total employee compensation, you have to include both pay and fringe benefits. That study confirmed that overall, our fringe benefits are much higher than the other jurisdictions. The most costly of those benefits is the health insurance plan. We studied those plans to see how you compared to the other top nine plans in North Carolina. Hang on just a minute, this jumped. In addition, we added the city of Asheville's plan, as well as the two plans offered to state employees. And as you know, the state employee plan covers all of our K through 12 personnel, UNC Asheville, AB Tech, and all state agency personnel. We reviewed all of this information with you in a work session on August 14th. As with the other fringe benefits, our three health plans were among the very best compared to these other governmental employers. A decision on any changes to the health insurance plan need to be made by the first meeting in October if at all possible. And that's why we're bringing these recommendations to you now. The reason is that each year, we have open enrollment for our employees in October where they make the selections for their benefits for the next calendar year. For example, this is when they would select which health insurance level of coverage they want. Consequently, we've prepared a recommendation for these plans. While you just approved the fiscal year 19 budget in June, the reality is that you have already begun developing the fiscal year 2020 budget. The decision on the health plan starts it. In addition, since you have an automatic COLA or cost of living adjustment effective each April 1, each April 1, which is mandated to be in your personnel policies to be based on what the consumer price index is for December of each year, that decision has to be made early as well. There are two other major cost components that will drive your budget. Annual operating budget increases by the Buncombe County School System and the Asheville City School System, and increase in debt service payments for additional debt issuance. Bear in mind that these are not the only increases that you will face, but they are the largest. These need to be compared with the estimated revenue to cover them. Figure one is a spreadsheet that shows the estimated revenues minus the estimated expenditures for these four expenses, as well as the recently approved six additional school resource officers. And I hope the audience can see that spreadsheet. In going over that spreadsheet, the general fund revenues in fiscal year 2019 budget are $308,183,037 once you remove the fund balance appropriated. Fund balance appropriated is not a revenue source. It is savings from previous years. The fiscal year 2019 general fund rate of revenue growth was 2.28%. If we assume that revenue growth in fiscal year 2020 will be similar to fiscal year 2019, revenues will grow by $7,26,537 and that's where you get the total up there. So that is the estimated growth in our general fund revenues for fiscal year 20, if things stay like the current year. Moving to expenditures, the CPI for 2018 through July is now 2.22%. Inflation has been trending higher, but we'll use this number for now until we have the December number sometime in January of 2019 that your policy calls for. At that CPI, the automatic COLA in April will cost the county $2,288,861. So that is the first line item of the expenditures on that chart. Health insurance claims are estimated to increase by 10%, which has been the trend. Assuming no changes to the health insurance plans, that increase would cost the county $2.7 million and that's the next line item on that chart. If there is no change in the level of request from both the Buncombe County School System and the Asheville City School System, the increase would be 4.3% as in fiscal year 2019. That would cost the county $3,328,068. And that's the third line item on there. You've approved capital projects for the general fund that will take $722,429 in new debt service payments. This assumes that we issue that debt on or before June 30th, 2019. The current plan is to issue it in the spring. You cannot issue it until you have your audit completed. And so that's what the delay is. The rest of it will be for schools and paid from their restricted capital funds. The good news is that the existing debt service payments from the general fund will decline next year by $564,064. So the net increase in general fund debt service payments will be only $158,365. And so those are the two, next two line items, the 564,000 decrease, but then you have the additional debt service of 722,429,000. The next thing you have is, we approved at the last meeting, a grant match for fiscal year 2020 of $227,617 to hire the six additional school resource officers. You took care of tonight in your amendment, the budgeting for the current year. This is the budgeting for the second year. And as you recall, that was our match. It's the 227,617. When you add those five expenditures together, that gives you a total of $8,702,911 or $1,676,338 more than the anticipated revenue growth. This is a structural budget deficit that will recur every budget year unless expenditures are brought into line with revenues. So I want to, that's the main point I want to emphasize about this chart, is we have, we will have a structural deficit of $1.676 million.
So I have a question, Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
It's okay. So this, of course, this deficit is based on this chart, right? And based on the numbers in the chart.
Yeah.
Okay. So, but in that chart is 4.3% increase at schools. And, but we've, we've had discussion about, you know, having a target, not necessarily whether we hit it or not, of the, of 2.3 or 2.28.
That's right.
So if, I mean, we, we need to look at, at the, those scenarios also.
And I'm going to address that in here, but you're exactly right. You've got, you've got, I'm, I'm going to come to that in just a minute, but you're, you've basically you've basically got two opportunities to cut this deficit.
But a request, but, but also a request could come in at, at 5% from the schools, not 4.3, and we might choose to approve it, you know, so I want to be clear on that, but there's various scenarios even within this.
Absolutely.
Right.
What I've done here is assumed that those four cost factors will be similar as, in terms of percentages, as the current year. And in the absence of doing something different, they probably will be, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, three of the five expenditures have been decided already. The increased debt service is necessary to continue capital projects, and it's a small increase. The COLA issue was decided at the August 28th meeting, and then the SRO expenditures were approved on September the 4th. So that leaves the health plan and education funding to deal with this structural deficit. While everyone supports education, this county cannot continue to fund it at a higher rate than you have revenues to support it. If you do, you will have made a conscious choice to decrease every year the operating budgets of some of the county departments and agencies you support. Because what will happen is, the additional funding for them will crowd those departments out, unless you want to raise taxes. But if you want to stay at the tax rate you're at, these expenditures have to be cut. And that's the point I'm trying to make there.
And that's a, I think that's a great sort of moment to pause and just recognize, especially this early in the budget discussion process, that there are, those are all different tools and instruments available to us as we assess kind of the totality of budget. And it's helpful to have this kind of forecasting, but I think, you know, not reflected in there is that we could elect to raise taxes. I'm not saying we will, but we do have tools available to us beyond those reflected in, in this breakdown.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not debating that.
Sure, sure, I'm just, you know, we have, we're having a public discussion.
Right, and there's no question that if you want to make up additional revenues to offset the expenditures, you can certainly do that. That is one of your options.
Right, if we hadn't changed the tax rate this year, there actually wouldn't be this gap. Right? We, we changed it a penny. There's about a penny gap now, so in a way, that's kind of creating the, the gap.
Let me talk about that a minute. This is based on that the total tax base would grow by 2.28%. So, with that, that's what would generate the $7 million. If you added one more penny to that, and I've forgotten, what is the tax rate?
3.7 million.
53.6.
3.7 million, around that.
So, so one, one cent on that would probably be a 2% decrease from what it would have been, on the $7 million. Okay?
Yeah, I just think it's important to recognize, and we could go far down the rabbit hole of hypotheticals at this stage of the process, but for us just to sort of pause and recognize that we could have, we, we could have decided that the settlement money that we received would go towards the general fund, which also would have,
Yeah.
which also would have addressed the, what's looking like a deficit right now. So just, and again, this is mostly for, we have community members watching, people tuning in. We don't get many chances to sort of talk about the budget at this level. So I think it's just helpful to sort of pause and recognize that it's easy to kind of make one decision and then sort of a cascading set of assumptions on the basis of that, but we're constantly making decisions and assessments. So the settlement money, we discussed it as if it funded the school budget that we approved last time, but that is sort of a rhetorical mechanism in a sense.
Right, actually, I didn't say that. What I said was, is that it, we were coming out of fund balance, so instead of coming out of fund balance, we were able to use that settlement money to not come out of fund balance. And the timing of the two, you know, kind of, you know, looked like we were able to fund the school with that fund balance, but, but we did not have to come out of fund balance. Now, to your point, we can come out of fund balance and, and fund that, but here's what I, here's what I like about this. We've not had this kind of conversation. We've not had this kind of presentation made to us. We've not had the opportunity to have this open discussion and have this kind of dialogue and look at all these different scenarios, and there's got to be a starting point, and that's what this is. It's a starting point presented by, by interim county manager, which is, which is great. And, and there's a lot of different ways that we can, we can, we can look at this, you know.
And I am going to address the mission funding also later on in this. So now, let me, let us address the health insurance plan and other fringe benefits. Before getting into the details, I do think you need to address an underlying philosophical question, and that is, what fiduciary duty is owed to the taxpayers on one hand, and our employees on the other? You have the difficult task of deciding the appropriate balance between those two competing interests. They are in competition because any benefit you provide our employees must be paid for by the taxpayer. In my professional opinion, the Board of Commissioners has a responsibility to provide reasonable benefits to their employees, so the taxpayers are not unduly burdened in paying for the county's workforce. How do you define reasonable in this situation? Again, in my opinion, it is an amount comparable to what similar employers are paying for their employees. To provide below-average pay in fringe benefits would cause higher employee turnover and morale issues. To provide above-average pay in fringe benefits would place an unnecessary tax burden on the taxpayers. In looking at where we might eliminate this $1,676,000 structural deficit, our fringe benefit study seems to me to be the logical answer. We have documented that our fringe benefits are much higher than the nine other counties, and our health plan also is much richer than the nine other counties, the City of Asheville and the State of North Carolina. Consequently, I'm proposing a change in the health insurance plans for Buncombe County and in the sale of annual leave policy. Figure two, if we could go ahead and get that up. Figure two is a spreadsheet showing the basic components of the three existing plans and the two proposed plans to replace them. The first current plan is what's called a 95-5 plan, meaning that after a deductible is met, the medical claims costs are paid 95% by the county and only 5% by the employee until his out-of-pocket maximum is reached. None of the other counties, Asheville nor the State of North Carolina, offer a 95-5 plan due to its cost. Note that it has the lowest deductibles and maximum out-of-pocket expenses of any of the three existing plans. In addition, this plan has been closed to new hires since 2009. 54% of our employees and retirees are on this plan, but said another way, 46% are excluded and have been since 2000, the end of 2009. That percentage will increase as new employees are hired. And so one question is, is that fair to our younger employees, most of which would be our lower-paid employees? In my view, we simply cannot afford this plan, and nor can we justify to our taxpayers keeping it when compared to the other counties, Asheville and the State of North Carolina. Our core plan is a 70-30 plan, which has the highest deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums of the three existing plans. And then, our employees can buy up or pay a higher premium and get the buy-up plan, which is an 80-20 plan, which has the highest premiums, but is mid-range on the deductibles and the maximum out-of-pocket expenses. All three plans participate in Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina's Preferred Provider Organization, by which Blue Cross Blue Shield has negotiated lower-than-usual rates with the providers and passes those savings on to clients using their PPO. The county employs Blue Cross Blue Shield as our third-party administrator to handle medical claims administration and assure that PPO prices only are charged, so that we're getting the discounts that we're entitled to as being part of theirs. So, I've shown you the proposed plans there. I'm recommending that you replace these three plans with two plans. The first would be, and it's in the yellow up there, the first is an 80-20 PPO plan, still utilizing Blue Cross Blue Shield's PPO network, and a new consumer-driven plan, which is a high deductible with a HSA. An HSA is a health savings account. And if we could, let's put up figure three. There should be one in there, on the, yeah, right there. This is the, the components of an HSA plan. The difference is, right now, you have a flexible spending account, which goes with your PPO, and a health savings account, which can be used with a high deductible plan. The money that an employee puts into that, unlike a flexible spending account, is the employee's money. So, you know, with a flexible spending account, if you don't spend it at the end of the year, you lose it. This is designed to be a savings account, and so if the employee puts money in there, and in this, the county will be putting $1,000 in this. When, when the year ends, if they haven't spent it all, they get to keep that money. And so they can roll it over into the next year. And that's the difference between that and a flexible spending account. And as I said previously, I'm recommending a $1,000 annual contribution to an employee's HSA to incentivize employees to select this plan. It is best suited for employees who have limited medical expenses. And so I'm asking you to review the chart of the five plans for the major differences in them, and Kurt will be going over more details on that. But the main thing I want to note is that premiums for the PPO plan that we're proposing are lower than both the existing standard plan and the buy-up plan, and lower than most of the categories of the core plan. Also note that the premiums for the consumer-driven plan are half of those of the PPO plan that we're proposing, again, to incentivize its use. The PPO plan does raise the deductibles and the maximum out-of-pocket expenses. It also raises the emergency room co-pay from $150 to $250 to incentivize employees to use urgent care for non-emergency medical services. Unfortunately, we have some employees who abuse the emergency room using it for non-emergencies. When they do that, the, the emergency room can cost us over, the county can, on our plan, can cost us over $1,000 per visit. And they're paying $150 right now. The prescription co-pays remain the same for the PPO plan, but do rise for the consumer-driven plan. It requires that employees meet their deductible, then pay 20% of the actual cost of the drug until the maximum out-of-pocket is reached. And on that, let's put up figure four. I think y'all, yeah, you went too far. Keep backing up. Okay. So those are the prescription drugs. You'll see that under the PPO, there's no change in that. We're not recommending any change in that. So by moving to these two new.
Can you explain, can you explain on the right? Because that's, that's on, that's on our urgent. The consumer-directed plan also says on urgent care and emergency room, deductible then 20%. It says that there. Can you explain to me what that means?
Well, once you, if you haven't met your deductible, you have to pay the deductible first. Once you've met your deductible, whatever the charges are for the emergency room, you have to pay 20%.
Not $40? So you, so you've got to meet, on, on the last one, you've got to meet your deductible.
Right.
Whatever that is, $1,500.
So if you had a $1,000 bill from the emergency room, you'd pay 200.
But if I went to urgent care, and the bill was $100?
Well, typically, the.
Urgent care would be $40?
Urgent care would be $40, under the other plan.
So wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the same on that?
Well, remember that on the consumer-driven, you're having, it's a higher deductible plan.
Yeah.
But they're getting a much lower premium.
But the urgent care, wouldn't the urgent care be the same? $40? No?
No.
It'd be whatever they charge?
It's what they charge.
Okay, all right.
It's not a co-pay for that. It's, 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 it's meet your deductible and then pay 20%. Up to your maximum out-of-pocket. Okay? Got to look at where we left on. Okay, by moving to these two new medical insurance plans and changing to a limit of selling only one week of annual leave, which saves $348,351, the county will save $1.6 million. And both of our medical plans will still be among the richest of the nine other counties, Asheville and the State of North Carolina. And I referenced the appendix one on that, and that's what Kurt will be going over with you in more detail. The sale of leave comparison, and I think we have that on here, yeah, right there. Okay, the blue one, that blue line is where we are right now. Eight of the 10 counties do not allow employees to sell any annual leave. Mecklenburg is the only one that allows it, other than Buncombe, and they cap it at one week. And ours pretty much is unlimited. Whatever you earn, you could sell back to the county. And so what we're proposing here is that we match what Mecklenburg's doing. And that would get us in line with what these other counties are doing. And that's a $348,000 savings to the county. Okay. Appendix two to this report shows the financial impact to our employees of medical claims of 500, 1,000, 2,000, 4,000, 8,000, 16,000, and 50,000 under each of these plans for both the employee-only coverage and if they have full family coverage. And again, Kurt's going to go into detail on that and walk you through that. Finally, I know that some people think the pending sale of Mission Hospital System to HCA, which was announced on August 31st, will not require us to make these difficult decisions. The estimated increase in property taxes from that sale is $8,100,000. However, let me caution you that those assets have never been appraised by the Tax Assessor's Office, for the simple reason is, they weren't taxable. So we will have to make a detailed appraisal of all the assets, real and personal, deduct the depreciation to determine the actual estimated property tax proceeds. But for purposes of this discussion, we're going to use the $8.1 million figure. So now, if we'll go to, you already got it, figure six is up there, for the uses of that money. So, let me get to that on my sheets.
Page 10.
Okay, so you start off with the $8,100,000. But we used three, we used money to balance the current year's budget that were three one-time uses of money. In other words, they're not going to recur. The first is that $675,000 for fleet replacement costs were covered by one-time savings in the Capital Projects Fund. Now, we may underspend some projects, we may not underspend some projects, but you cannot rely on one-time money to balance an ongoing budget. The second is that $1.5 million was transferred from the health insurance fund to the general fund. And this was the second consecutive year this was budgeted. This cannot continue if you want to stabilize your health insurance fund. And again, remember, that fund is facing 10% medical cost increases every year. And that's why we have a $2.7 million increase in that. And the problem with that is, you can, for the foreseeable future, you can anticipate that those rate increases will be comparable to that each and every year. The third was $1.52 million of AB Tech fund money used to pay for more of the college's operating expenditures. And I'd like to look at figure seven now. This is the AB Tech Capital Projects Fund. And basically, the way it's currently budgeted, it's not sustainable. Note that from a beginning fund balance of $17,622,802, on June 30th, 2017, it's projected to be only $2,844,000 at the end of fiscal year 2021. In other words, in only four fiscal years, this fund will have decreased by $14,778,344. Fiscal year 2019 alone is projected to spend $6 million more than the revenues. So you are eating into that existing fund balance very rapidly. So you are eating into that existing fund balance very rapidly, the way that's, the way it's done right now. And the AB Tech Board is very concerned about that. The other issue with this is we're not even budgeting adequately for their capital maintenance needs. You have a memorandum from PFA Architects, and I don't know if we were able to get that slide in here or not. Yeah. Okay. In the body of that, they have done detailed assessments of six of the 21 buildings. Based on the, and they're in the process of doing the rest. We'll have all of them done late November, early December. So we'll actually have a firm number by then, as to what it's going to cost. What they have done here, at our construction guy's request, is give us a ballpark figure. So what they've done is they've taken those actual costs for the first six buildings, they've divided that by the square footage cost to get what, by the square footage to get a per-square-footage cost. They've then multiplied that by the square footage cost of the remaining buildings. So the assumption is they're going to be comparable to what they've already looked at. And that comes to over $24 million. We're going to, because this will be a year off, and with construction inflation, we're going to take that up to $25 million. Again, this is a ballpark number. I'll come back to you later, once we have a detailed number on that, and we will adjust that spreadsheet for AB Tech on that. What we do know is, what we're doing is not adequate. If you have $25 million of that, and if we could go back now to the previous slide, that slide shows that in future years, you're going to put $2,300,000 a year into your capital plan maintenance. The problem is, over an eight-year period, that won't cover $25 million worth of construction project. So, so we're going to have to take that amount up. I'm not prepared to give you a number yet, because I'm waiting on those, on those actual numbers. But I can tell you, with a little bit that I've worked on it so far, it's probably going to be at least $3 billion and more. So we know that every one of those is $1 million short. Okay? Now, the problem is, is that we're using up that fund balance very rapidly, and that is going to create, that's eight, that's eight more years of, that's another $8 million you would have to come up with. And you can't do that, because that fund will run out of the money. So that's why I'm saying, this is not sustainable, the way we're using it right now. We've got to do something about stabilizing that fund. And basically, the problem is, if you look down there, it's, there's the line item called "transfers to general fund." You don't have the previous year, but I have that chart. If, if you had fiscal year 17 on there, that year, you transferred to the general fund By fiscal year 18, that got taken up to $5.8 million, which is almost $3.5 million more. And then in the current year's budget, it got taken up $700,000 more to $6.5 million. And so, that's going to have to come down. That, we can't sustain that transfer. You're going to run out of the money. And so, the reason I'm bringing that up is, if you can't transfer that money to the general fund, then the general fund's got to come up with that money from somewhere else. So is everybody following that? Okay.
So I was just taking out, that money was just taken out of the sales tax-
That's right.
And put into the, and, and put into the general fund. The advantage of what we went through before, which was making all of our heads spin, is that, is that, that's not going to happen without somebody seeing that. Right?
Right.
That's exactly why we went through that exercise, is that that money's not going to be moved from one place to another without the public seeing exactly how much it is.
And, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. Because basically, what you've been doing is, you've been balancing your budget by doing things like that, and that's not sustainable. And you've also been using other one-time revenues, and you can't keep doing that. So that, you know, we're going to go through this for 45 minutes, but that's the message.
Yeah.
Is we cannot keep doing this.
Well, the fact is, on that particular deal, the quarter cent sales tax was set in place to help the construction of AB Tech.
Right.
I was against it, but I, once it's there, and I'm on the board, I brought all of this to AB Tech, showing them what had happened.
You did, and you also showed it to me, and that was the basis of my looking into this very deeply.
And I appreciate that very much, Mr. Wood. But, you know, and, and you've been good. We, we met, we went over, we talked to them. They're listening, and, but we, we're paying for things in the quarter cent sales tax that were put in there in 2013. $13 million for the, what do you call it down on the river?
Parking?
No, the-
Allied Health?
No, the building on the river, that you went to. The fire training center.
Yeah, the training.
$13 million for fire training center was moved from Buncombe County's debt to a quarter cent sales tax. The gun range was moved to, from Buncombe County to the quarter cent sales tax. We owe $92 million. And the payback is $140 million. Now, we've started taking the money that we used to give $6 million to AB Tech. We have taken the money, and I'm sorry jumping in here, but-
No, that's fine.
And abused it. We haven't. People that worked here before did. And they didn't care. It was money that was, it was a slush fund. And I have to thank, or think, thank all the commissioners, because when a $27 million building come about for AB Tech, we killed it. It was put in a consent agenda. That was a new area for money to be able to go borrow $27 more million that we would owed. That would have put us $30 million in the hole. But I thank Mr. Wood for stepping in there and, and picking this up, because it's very important that we figure out how to get some of the money back to AB Tech. Right now, the county gives them not one red cent. And that, the county, county does, was giving them over $8 million, then it went to $6 million. Now we're down to zero, because it was bled out, the $6.5 million, $5.7 million, $2.7 million was bled out of this. But, Mr. Wood, thanks for bringing this forward, because this, this is a big issue.
It is.
And we have a lot of big ones, so.
Well, it's, and it's a big issue, not only for the AB Tech Board, but also for you in dealing with your general fund, because we cannot be, transfer the amount of money we've been transferring out of this over to the general fund. So what I'm recommending is that the Board of Commissioners and the AB Tech Board develop a policy on how much of the Article 46 sales tax, and that's the quarter cent that, that you see here, should be used for AB Tech operating expenses, and how much should be reserved for capital projects. So, going back again to what I was saying earlier, I'm waiting on, from Greg Israel, I'm waiting on him to provide me with the building assessments for the other buildings. Once we have that number, I'll sit down with Greg, we'll go through this, and we'll modify this, this spreadsheet, depending on what they say. And I should point out that what the architects and CMA are that are assisting him on this, they have four levels of priority, one, two, three, and four. Levels one and two are the most serious. You know, that's things like replacing a roof, an HVAC, a chiller unit, things like that. And those are things that absolutely have to be done. Some of the others might be a little more cosmetic and things like that. This is only addressing priorities one and two. It does not get to the others. But when we get the full assessments, we'll have all of it for you. So, again, what I'm proposing is, is that we develop a policy jointly with the AB Tech Board. It should be based on a thorough discussion of their long-term capital needs, and again, that's what we're waiting on from Greg, and then we'll have that. Getting the building condition assessments back in early December should be the basis for this. Commissioner Fryer and I started this process Friday a week ago. As he said, we did have a meeting with President King and the AB Tech Executive Board. I went through this with them, and we talked about the, the various components of what it would take to get this stabilized. Now, Greg is of the opinion that we should not let this thing go below $2 million to keep that on hand, in case they were to have something unusual happen. That's just a reserve there. So when we're doing this, we're going to try to preserve that number, or limit the number of years we might go below that. So that's what I'll be bringing back to you on that. So when you subtract those items that we talked about, if we could go back to the original chart with the 8.1 million on it, when you subtract those items, you come up with uses of $3,695,000, which were uses of additional tax revenues. Now, what I was planning on doing is presenting this to you and show you that this would come out of the 8.1 million we get from Mission. There is some talk now that they may not conclude that agreement until after the first of the year. If they do that, I've double-checked with Keith Miller, our tax assessor. It's, it's whoever owns the property on January 1. So if that sale doesn't consummate until after January 1, that 8.1 million goes away for next fiscal year. It'll be there from every year thereafter. But in terms of balancing your fiscal year 2020 budget, that won't be there. So I want to be clear about that. We just have to monitor whether or not that closes or not. But let's assume, for the sake of argument right now, that it does close, and we do get the 8.1 million, because that's what this chart is showing. Then that leaves you $4,405,000 as a surplus to do other things with. And I've made a list of those. Those are all question marks, because we don't know what they would cost. But these are all things that, that we on staff think you need to look at before you make any other decisions on it. First, you've expressed an interest in giving more of a COLA to your lower-paid employees. This discussion has not gotten into a specific percentage or dollar range. So that would, that would be some of the use of that money. And if you don't get it this year, that is something you could look at in future years. Second, you may want to consider whether to provide some property tax relief from this money. In essence, you've done that, because you, you gave them the pennyback last year, and that was about $3.7 million. And I think part of the anticipation was, we would be able to handle it, because we'd have this $8.1 million. So, to some degree, you've already given some property relief from this. Third, you need to look at an updated capital improvements program and determine the amount of new debt it would take to pay for it. Only then can you determine if additional debt service payments will need to be made from some of this money. The capital improvements program is always updated as part of the annual budget. So you'll have all those documents and the recommendations as part of the budget and the capital improvements program, but that won't be until we present it to you in May. And then you would be making decisions on that in June. So, I would recommend that you not spend all of this money and hold some of that until we see how that's going. Fourth is the need to cover the increase, the increased expense to adequately maintain AB Tech's facilities discussed above. And again, it'll be several months before a detailed plan is developed. And then, fifth, you may want to decrease future debt service payments by paying cash for some planned capital projects instead of financing with debt. The debt issuance that we're looking at in the spring of 19, you have a lot of, an aggregation of very small projects in there. We may want to look seriously about whether you want to pay cash for those and save the, the interest expense on that, if you have it. The advantage of using it for capital expenses is, that's one-time use, so that money would be available again the next year to use for something else. If you put it into your operating budget, then it's, it's sunk in there from there on out, and you can't, you can't use it for something else in future years. Sixth, you may want to expand some of your strategic priority programs. I think you have six strategic priorities, and you may want to look at whether you're going to expand any of those. There may be other potential uses for this money, of which I am unaware. All of these potential uses should be thoroughly researched before any decisions are made. Consequently, I do not recommend that you use any of the 8.1 million to offset the fiscal year 2020 budget expenditures, other than to fill the gap created by using one-time revenue to balance the fiscal year 2019 budget, as noted above. So what I'm, what I'm recommending is that you use the, what is it, $3,695,000 to cover those one-time expenses with recurring money, but you don't do anything with the $4.4 million until we've researched all of these issues, and then, and then you make a decision how you want to use that money. But I would recommend you get the research done on all of them, so that you know what you're facing, before you make a decision on that. And then, finally, I cannot emphasize too strongly, that when you add the $1,676,000 structural deficit noted above, to the $3,695,000 of one-time revenue sources in fiscal year 2019, that won't be available in fiscal year 2020 budget, you're facing a structural deficit of $5,371,338. Obviously, this has got to be addressed. So my recommendation is that you approve the two proposed health insurance plans as presented, to be effective on the new plan year, which is January 1 of 2019. And it should be obvious that when you make that change, if you don't make any changes, then the costs are going to be 10% higher, and six months of that next fiscal year is going to be affected by that, because you don't change the rates until January of the following year, if you don't do them now. So my recommendation is that you approve the two proposed health insurance plans as presented, to be effective on the new plan year, January 1, 2019. And further, I recommend that you approve an amendment to the personnel policies that will change the provision on sale of annual leave to allow only one week of leave to be sold annually, provided that the employee maintains a balance of at least 40 hours of annual leave immediately after the sale. In other words, we don't want people selling that and then have absolutely no leave in the bank. That is not a good place for an employee to be. These two actions would cut the deficit above by 1.6 million, while getting these policies closer in line with similar governments in North Carolina. So with that, that's my presentation, and what I'd like to do now is turn this over to Kurt Ulller, who is our risk management person, and let Kurt go into more detail on the actual plans and, and how everything stacks up. So Kurt?
All right. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Board. My name's Kurt Ulller. I'm the Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. I'm here to give you a more detailed view of, let me see, all right, of where we're at. Let me get to where I start.
Chairman, did we take five minutes since we're starting another?
This would be a good, good place to do it.
Yeah.
Sure. All right, take a five-minute break.
Yes. I know-
You know, it's great what you're doing, because we have given the worst-case scenario, but it's up to us to decide. What he's doing is something we shouldn't have been doing all along. It's good to look at the worst case, but now we got to make it work, what we think is best.
Yeah, forecasting is a great tool.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's great.
This is our, this is conversation.
We're going to get 12 inches of rain in flash floods in Buncombe County.
Hey, come on, bro.
it's up to us to decide. What he's doing is something we shouldn't have been doing all along. It's good to look at the worst case, but now we've got to make it work what we think is best.
Yeah, forecasting is a great tool.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's great.
This is our conversation.
We're going to get 12 inches of rain in Flacksville and Buncombe County.
Hey, come on, Brian.
We're not paying employees.
Don.
Well, he's old. He's left.
Do you know where parking validations are?
Um, I do. Well, I know where they typically are. I can go and see if there's something over there. Y'all need some?
Yeah, we got some.
Lamar's on it.
Hey, Mike. Mike, I think Lamar's got it.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, well, save him up, baby.
I think Lamar's got it.
Oh, they got it? I think he's got it already. Hey, Brandon.
Yes, sir. Good.
You talk?
I've got a bunch of shit.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully, I'll be better after this is over.
All right, Zellie?
Why, I don't know, but good job. I mean, I think he's tipped it.
You need a Tylenol or something?
Yeah, it's rough.
I thought someone's got one around here somewhere.
Well, I would rather.
It's a process.
No, I appreciate it.
Get closer.
Yeah.
I usually care if somebody will.
Thank you.
I'm looking for big pocketbooks.
That's like he was a big pocketbook.
You don't live her, but I do.
That's exactly right.
That's exactly right.
She was.
All right, we're good.
I'm going to try and just get some highlights.
Goodness gracious.
What the heck?
I'm not staying connected to the six.
Hey, Al.
There you go.
I want to give your wife a hundred dollars.
Go up and tax it just to give your baby.
You won't have to pay it.
Yeah, I will though. I want to be sure it gets done.
Hey, you won't have to pay it. She'll do it.
Oh, oh, Don. Don.
Let's, uh...
I'll talk to you. Yeah. Go ahead.
Let's go ahead and get started again. All right. Mr. Ulller, you want to?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I guess what I want to do is kind of try to hit some highlights as to how did we come up with this proposal, with the county manager's recommendations, sort of some of the things that are driving it. This first slide basically shows that for fiscal year 2018, we had claims, and when I say claims, that's basically medical and pharmacy. That doesn't include administrative expenses or any other ancillary expenses. It's straight medical claims and pharmacy. We had 26.5 million dollars. So that's basically claims that the county paid. We've looked at it over from 2013 to 2018. We're averaging about 9.17%. Blue Cross is projecting that our increases need to be 10%. So that's kind of how our trend has been going. Some years are better than others, but it's definitely about a 9%. Really, one of the main goals that my department has is trying to control that trend. We don't want our trend to be in the double digits. We really want to try to get that trend down to 4% or a lower increase so that obviously we can handle those increases without passing a lot of the costs on to the employees. So once again, this is sort of a breakdown of the demographics. So we have approximately 407 people currently on the core plan, which is the least-rich plan we have. We have about 386 people, and these are just subscribers. So these are the people that actually hold the policies or employees. We have 386 in the buy-up and then standard, we have 931 people. So standard has 99.9% of the retirees on the standard plan. If you look at the breakdown, 365 of the 913 are actually retirees, whereas 566 are employees. So that's sort of a breakdown. We have a total of 4,000 members, so that's including all the dependents, spouses, and dependents. So when we're talking employees, that's the subscriber, and then when we talk members, that would be all the people who are on the plan. So once again, we compared, when we were comparing, this is a list of all the counties. I do want, and these are kind of the highlights of this proposed plan. Number one, even with the changes we have, our healthcare plans are still better than any of the comparison plans in the state. So we are still keeping the best plan, and I don't think that's something to be ashamed of. Number two, we've got, our deductibles are the third lowest in the state. We have the lowest family premiums. We have the lowest out-of-pocket maximums. Basically, we have the most affordable healthcare plan even with these changes. Now, I want to say this upfront. I understand that nobody likes having their benefits changed or raised, but I do want to state that we have not had a premium increase since 2014. We have not changed any of the terms or any of the makeup of the plans, the buy-up in the core since 2010, and we did make a change to the standard plan in 2016. So we've had relatively few changes over the years in terms of trying to make up any differential or make up where we're, you know, to have the thing. So I want to show, I think this is an important thing. This is sort of the percentage that employees pay versus what the county pays. So for this 2016 plan year, the county paid 94% of the healthcare costs. The employees paid 6%. Based on not doing anything, in 2017, employees ended up paying only 5% and the county paid 95%. The average, or what Blue Cross and Blue Shield says is the average, is 86%, 14%. So our employees are paying a lot less than other comparable government agencies with Blue Cross and Blue Shield's book of business. When you break that down further, people on the standard plan are only paying 4% of their costs. People on the buy-up are only paying 6%, and people on the core end up paying 9% of the total costs for their healthcare. And when I say total costs, that does not include premiums. So we're talking about deductible copayment, deductible copayments and any other things that people pay, but it doesn't include premiums. With these plans, the highlights of these plans, number one, we've tried to blend the features of all three plans, so not one group is getting disproportionately affected. I do have to say that the standard people are having a much higher increase in their out-of-pocket deductibles and their out-of-pocket max. I also want to say that the standard plan has had very, very low that for pretty much since the inception of the health plan. So we're trying to normalize it and have it more equal in one plan. The deductibles for the, but the standard plan people are going to have a 12% decrease on their monthly, on their bi-weekly premium. In addition, the deductibles for the core are going to be slightly higher, but the core people are going from a 70-30 to an 80-20 plan, and the people on the buy-up will also have their out-of-pocket maximums and deductibles raised, but they will see a decrease in their month, in their bi-weekly premiums. So, sure.
Forgive me if this has been addressed. With the two proposed plans, are these prepackaged plans that Blue Cross and Shield in North Carolina has generated, or are these plans that Buncombe County sort of?
No. Well, I mean, they're kind of, everybody kind of uses the same model, I think, whether you're using a PPO with Blue Cross, but we are the ones that pick like what the deductible's going to be. We set all of those numbers and sort of try to make it that, so it's really our design. We can really do what we want.
The county has the agency to adjust any of those variables?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just clarifying that.
So we can pretty much do whatever we, what we want, and Blue Cross actually will then act as our agent to implement it. So we're not buying an off-the-shelf plan. So for the high-deductible plan, one, I think the things that you need to remember is, is that according to IRS rules, the employee is responsible for paying that first $1,500 or $3,000 out of their pockets. So there can be, there are no copays in this plan. So if they go to the, you know, they get medication, they have to pay whatever the costs are up to the deductible. If they go to a doctor's office, they have to pay whatever the doctor's cost is up to that. However, that does allow the employee to actually shop around and introduce an element of consumerism in terms of if they can find a good deal. I do want to say that people can shop around on their prescriptions and it's not all doom and gloom. You'd be surprised at how little a lot of the generic drugs actually cost. They may be paying $10, $30 a pop, but it's not outrageous. Now, people who are on name-brand drugs, that's probably going to be difficult and probably the consumer-driven plan is not the plan for them at this point in time. So, and I want to say too, that the deductibles that we've set on the consumer-driven plan are much, are lowest, are the lowest in the state. So once again, I think we're being a leader in trying to provide great healthcare to our employees by making sure that we're at the front of the chart as opposed to the back, and I will show you some of those examples. But an important number I want to point out is the cost share. By adopting this plan, you're getting our cost share to an 87% where the county's going to pay 87% and 13%. I think it is very important that the county establish a ratio so that next year when we have increases, we can go to the workforce and say, "Look, our costs have raised this much. You are responsible for 13%. The county's responsible for 87%." We've never established that, and I think that if we want to be transparent and develop a partnership with our employees, it is very important for us to adopt a ratio, whatever that may be, but have that number and keep that and be consistent going forward. Sure.
I want to be clear about this. Our increase is projected at 2.7 million. We're only trying to save 1.6 million. And what that means is, is that we're trying to cut the cost by 6% of the 10%. The county is still going to eat a 4% increase. And what Kurt is saying is, is that in the future, if you're going to keep this percentage level, that if we get a 10% increase, if you don't tweak the plan, what should happen is, is that the county's portion should go up 10% and the employee's portion should go up 10%. Obviously, we can't afford that and the employees can't afford that. So what you try to do is you're going to have to tweak this plan and try to get it down to where we have roughly a 4% increase. And that's what most employers are facing today. The difference here is, as he said, since 2014, you've not adjusted any premiums, so the county has eaten 100% of those increased costs over those years.
And in all fairness to the Board of Commissioners, it's never been brought to your attention before, so this is the first time for that. So it's usually, it's never been done this way, so I do want to make sure that we're all clear on that, that, but I think what the county manager said is true. So by establishing that ratio, so I'm not going to go through the terms of the plan. I think the county manager did a really good job on that. So what I do though is want to show you how the proposed plan and our existing plan compares to other jurisdictions. So when you look at our premiums, so we did this on an annual basis, what an employee's going to say, so an employee only on the PPO is going to pay $572, and the most an employee's going to pay for family coverage is $1,602. On the consumer direct, the employee's only going to pay $286 a year, and the family's going to pay only $801 for the year. How that compares, as you can see with the red indicates where Buncombe County, where the proposed plans are, and the blue is where our things are for employee-only in this thing. One of the things I also want to say that Buncombe County does that most others don't is most other jurisdictions will give the employee-only a very cheap, a very discounted insurance policy, but then they end up charging any dependence you have at the full market rate. So this is for employee-only, so now when I switch this over, I want you to see how Buncombe County compares for family coverage. So as you can see here, we have the lowest premiums. Even with the changes, they're still lower than what any other jurisdiction has. The median annual cost, or the median excluding Buncombe County, is $5,817 a year for family healthcare coverage. So... So when you look at our premiums, so we did this on an annual basis, uh, what an employee's going to say. So an employee only on the PPO is going to pay five hundred and seventy-two dollars, and the most an employee's going to pay for family coverage is one thousand six hundred and two dollars. On the consumer direct, the employee's only going to pay two hundred and eighty-six dollars a year, and the family's going to pay only eight hundred and one dollar, uh, for the year. How that compares, as you can see with the red, uh, indicates where Buncombe County, where the proposed plans are, and the blue is where our things are for employee-only in this thing. One of the things I also want to say that Buncombe County does that most others don't is, most other jurisdictions will give the employee-only a very cheap, uh, a very discounted insurance policy, but then they end up charging any dependents you have at the full market rate. So this is for employee-only. So now, when I switch this over, I want you to see how Buncombe County compares for family coverage. So as you can see here, we have the lowest premiums. Even with the changes, they're still lower than what any other jurisdiction has. The median annual cost, or the median excluding Buncombe County, is five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars a year for family healthcare coverage. So based on that numbers, we're still trying to do our best to keep it, the costs down for our employees. So I also want to compare and show you how we compare with the deductibles. So the new deductibles will be seven hundred and fifty dollars for an individual and fifteen hundred for an individual plus. Uh, and then for the consumer-driven plan, it will be fifteen hundred dollars for an individual and three thousand for an individual plus. Once again, you can see here that our deductible is still going to be in the first quartile, and when you compare us to the rest of our peers. And I also want to point out that our deductible for the, uh, consumer-driven plan is also going to be lower than anybody else's consumer-driven And once again, this is comparing the family deductible. Once again, you will see that Buncombe County's deductible is low. Another thing I want to point out, that some of these other plans, like Union County plans that you see here, that's a direct primary care. So they basically tell their employees where they go. So if you go to the, basically the company primary care physician, it doesn't cost you anything. But if you go anywhere else, it does. We still have the Blue Cross and Blue Shield network, where we're allowing our employees to essentially go wherever they want to go to seek their care. And we're not restricting access in any way at this time.
Um, I have a quick question.
Sure.
And if the answer is yes, then we don't need to go into all the detail tonight. But is that model something that the county has looked at? The, the model you just mentioned from, what was the county you just mentioned?
Uh, Union County, yes.
Yeah, the direct, the direct, um, what's the term again, the correct term?
The direct primary care. We have looked at that. Um, I think that it's right now sort of in an infancy stage. I don't think we're ready to do that at this point in time. Um, but yes, that is an option. So for the next plan year, if we're looking at trying to cut costs in some way, we could introduce direct primary care. Or the, the, you have, will have ability to lower your costs based on how much you want to restrict access for people to get.
But I will tell you, that's going to be extremely unpopular, because you're, you're telling people they can't keep their doctor.
Yeah. I mean, it's a pretty novel, um, model for insurance, for providing healthcare, is it not?
Well, it's, it is. But we also have direct primary care in Buncombe County, where people could basically, like, kind of get a subscription at a primary care physician's, where, where you pay, let's say, fifty dollars a month, and you can go as much or as little as you want. So you're kind of buying a, a subscription. And so that's kind of how the consumer-driven plan allows employees kind of the freedom to shop around and, and get whatever care they want. And I think one of the things that will be on, on my department and, and on the county is to make sure that we give them the tools to help them be better shoppers and help them be more informed consumers. Um, that's, that's a very part, and that, that burdens on us. And so I want to make that clear.
Okay, thanks.
So once again, for the out-of-pocket maxes, we've been telling the same thing. Our out-of-pocket maxes are much lower than our peers. The median for our peers is five thousand dollars for a fa, or for an employee in network. Uh, and we are at for the, one thousand nine hundred for the PPO and three thousand for the consumer-driven health plan. Now, look at the peer median for family coverage for out-of-pocket maximums. The median is ten thousand three hundred dollars. Ours will be six thousand dollars for the consumer-driven plan and thirty-eight hundred dollars for the PPO. So what I would like to do is go through quickly kind of how this is going to affect employees. So we have some examples set up, and I'd like to just, so they kind of give you a flavor as to how this will affect our employees. So first thing we look...
Got a question.
Sure.
On the out-of-pocket maximum, is that actually what they've paid or what they have been charged that, the, the difference? You know what I'm saying?
Well, that is whatever they paid, that is the most that they would have to pay out-of-pocket in a plan year. So if you use the Blue Cross and Blue Shield network, you would not be paying like the retail price of the doctor's office. You would be paying the Blue Cross and Blue Shield price at the doctor's office. But you would have to, you know, basically get up to ten thousand dollars before the plan would kick in and cover your medical expenses at a hundred percent. Now, in our case, that number would be six thousand or three thousand, depending. Does that make sense?
Well, what I'm saying is, when, when you're measuring out-of-pocket, did they, is that actually out of their pocket? Or is that the difference between the, the deductible and what they were charged?
No. Well, if you're into the co-insurance, and I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly, but if, like, you meet your deductible, and then you're in what's kind of the co-insurance zone, there, any bill that you get's going to be split eighty-twenty or whatever the portion is. Whatever your twenty percent is, that will keep adding up until you reach your out-of-pocket maximum.
Right.
And once you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, then the plan will cover you at a hundred percent. And then you don't have to pay any more deductibles, no more co-insurance, no more anything. Basically, the plan covers all your costs at a hundred percent. I'm, I'm not there.
That's not what I was asking, but...
Well, I'm trying.
It may have been a silly question, so just move on. I'm going to leave it alone. Go ahead.
All right. I apologize.
Not a problem.
So what I wanted to do is show, like, what, like, with our three different plans, what the, what the impact is going to be, um, for someone who has five hundred dollars in medical claims. So as you can see here, and this is including your annual insurance premium. So as you can see here, uh, someone on our current standard plan would be out-of-pocket nine hundred and sixty dollars. The buy-up for the same claims, let's say, would be thirteen hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, the core would be one thousand twenty. Our proposed PPO would be one thousand seventy-two dollars. Now, for the, uh, consumer-directed plan, you would be out seven hundred eighty-six dollars. But with getting the one thousand dollars from the county, you'd actually be ahead two hundred and fourteen dollars. So that's a very low user. So we've done that. Once again, the impact with the family. Um, once again, you can see how much a person can expect to pay. Now, one thing I do want to say with these examples, we, we are unable to include any, uh, copayments. So if somebody's on a PPO, they may be making copayments for their doctors or for their prescriptions. Those amounts actually count towards the out-of-pocket maximum. So they may reach their out-of-pocket maximum sooner than in these examples. So now we get to two thousand dollars in claims. Um, you can see how much, now, these are in your appendix, but you can sort of see roughly how much someone's going to have to pay and how it compares to all the different plans. Um, I'd like to, in the, since the time, why don't we look at if you have sixteen thousand dollars in medical claims, all right? So in that, the standard plan person pays fourteen hundred dollars a year. The buy-up plan will end up paying two thousand sixty dollars a year. The core plan will pay, and this is for an individual, two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, and the, the proposed PPO will pay roughly the same amount, four thousand seven hundred, four, two thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars. And then lastly, the PPO with your, uh, actually, I can't see that amount. I think that's cut off. But you'd be paying about two thousand two hundred and eighty some odd dollars. So with the family, it goes up a lot, but most of that's because your premiums are higher. Uh, so once again, those are the examples, um, in terms of what it's going to cost an employee out-of-pocket per year. And you can compare where we're at to where we recommend. Um, I think my summary, I'd like to leave with a few points. Number one, Buncombe County currently has the richest healthcare benefits when you compare us to our peer municipalities and counties. That is not a bad thing. I think that's something that we want to be a leader in. That's the main reason a lot of people come and work with the county. That's the main reason why a lot of people stay with the county for as long as they do. And I think it is really important that we try to preserve this benefit the best that we can. Um, but we cannot deny the fact that our, the health plan's costs are, are increasing at an exponential rate, and we don't have the revenues to make up the deficits. Uh, the recommendation was to create two plans to better align with our peers, but also remain competitive and try to lower the impact to the county. And finally, I think what we want to do is establish an employer-employee cost ratio to create an open and transparent annual process for determining healthcare costs. I think that's really crucial. We need a, a partnership with our employees so that we're working together on this, because our employees have to help us lower costs. And if we can't lower our costs, that, that's where we got to be. So they need to be partners, because they're the ones going out there and consuming the healthcare. Um, and with that, I don't have anything, and I'm ready for questions. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Kurt.
Can you leave the summary up there?
Yes, sir. Uh, Max, can you leave the summary up there?
All right. Are there, are there any questions, uh, from commissioners at this time?
Uh, I've got a couple of comments. I don't know, I don't know if...
Now's the time to do them, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. So one i, one is, um, on the employee, employer cost ratio, which I understand what you were saying. If it's eighty-seven, thirteen, then we ought to, you know, if that's where it ends up, then that's where we ought to look at the, look at the program and see where the, the employees participate. So the only comment I want to make, you know, and I may have, I may have mentioned it, I know I've mentioned it before, uh, and it may not have been out here. It may have just been in conversation with, with commissioners. But, you know, I, I appreciate all the, all the hard work and the explanation of these plans and presenting them to us. Uh, however, I, I think that if, if you don't have an aggressive wellness program, uh, as part of this process, and I think a corporation or county or whoever it is owes it to their employees to have that as part of, uh, the, the ongoing review in costs. If you're going to get the costs down in, in Buncombe County with, with the employees, then you're going to have to have that as part of it.
Right.
And, and it can take, it can take a, a lot of forms and, and, and programs that families or, and individuals have available. And it's cheaper, much cheaper, for the county to fund those wellness programs. Uh, and make them simple, and make them easy for people to participate and get started and improve their health. Uh, and if you do that, then, because you got to stop the ten percent. Because you can't, you can't, you can't continue to have increases. No one, that's not sustainable at a household. It's not sustainable. It just doesn't work. Um, and I think there's some, there's some, uh, great information of what's been presented tonight. However, part of this, uh, in my opinion, has to be an aggressive wellness program. And there are, there are companies and other, uh, I'm sure government, uh, municipalities and others that are doing that. And we've heard of some of that, you know, recently. But I think we need to research that. We need to look at that. We need to have those benefits there for the, uh, for our employees. And because ultimately, the best thing for our, for our families, and the best thing for Buncombe County, is that we can figure out a way for them to become healthier and, uh, for them to be able to, uh, uh, you know, participate in, in more things with their family, and therefore that cost comes down. Um, and that's what we're trying, trying to achieve. Because it's not sustainable. Ten percent a year is absolutely not sustainable. That model will not work. And you have to, you have to put something like that, that in place. And I don't have the answer as to what that looks like, but I think we've got a, a strong enough staff and, and good enough people that can find out, um, you know, what that is. And what we have now, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, you know, B C Fit and some other things that we're having, having folks do, you know, where they can earn points and things. That, it, it's good, but it's not, you know, other, other folks have this model. We should go find that best practice and how they've been able to cut their, uncut their costs. And it's, and it's through a wellness program. And in my opinion, it's got to be part of the, part of the discussion.
And when we talk about a wellness plan, in our plan, and I'll have to ask, because I'm not in the plan, so you'll have to inform me here. But in the plan that the county has, do you get, uh, a reduction if you don't smoke or if you smoke? Is that even considered?
We currently, at this time, do not do. There's some of the options. We don't do anything for smoking or not. That is an option. The other thing that we don't do is biometric testing. What a lot of places do is, once a year, they have all the people who are on the plan come in, and they kind of do a health screening for them. And then if you have diabetes, they try to get you into a diabetes program and do that. We don't. That is something we're looking at for future plans.
Because that...
I totally agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Belcher and, and Commissioner White Sides. I think those are both great ideas. And those are things we're working on, but, uh, we can, we will try to work on them and try to get you something sooner rather than later.
And I, and there's other, like I said, there's other, you know, corporations that have, have done that. I, I mean, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the, the evolution of the break rooms in businesses, in, uh, production facilities, and I, I know of, I know of, uh, a, a company that, that has, uh, manufacturing facilities, and they, what they used to have was the break room that had the, the, uh, the Coke machines and a couple of refrigerators and a place where they could come in and buy snacks and, and, um, you know, cokes and drinks like that. And they've investing up to a million dollars in each of their manufacturing plants, because they know for their ca, for a cafeteria instead of a break room. I'm not saying we do anything like that. So, uh, but I'm saying that, 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 that change is, is, that sounds like a large number, but, but they're dropping their insurance, um, rates, and their people are healthier, and so their productivity goes up. And so there's just all kinds of benefits. So I'll, I'll get off my high horse on that. But, but a wellness program is, is, we, we, and it has to be a real wellness program.
Well, I do want to just echo that. And there are plans like that that other counties have. Uh, some do give, uh, discounts on the premiums if you're a non-smoker or, or if you're within your BMI index. And sometimes even if you're not in it, as long as you're making progress in getting that down, you know, then you'll get a discount. Um, but yeah, there are models out there. We just need to go research that.
Yeah. And I, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of different things, whether it's, you know, paying for a, you know, Weight Watchers program, or whether it's, you know, you know, paying for partial gym memberships on what you, you know, based on, you know, how much time you spend in them. And there's just a lot of different things out there.
And how do we look at, you know, the retiree plan that I have, it depends on when you retire, what you pick, or whatever. But how are we looking at our retiree plans? You know, because eventually, they're going to become supplemental policies anyway. You know, that's the way it works. But how are we looking? Because, you know, when I retired from the bank, based on, I wouldn't come on the county insurance because I can't afford to leave it. Because once I leave, I can't go back. You know, it's more or less, a lot of it's frozen. It might go up a little, but, you know, we have a very good deal. But how do we look at retirees?
So retirees are eligible for whatever plan is offered to the employees. So right now, um, and most of our retirees have retired, or were on the standard plan when they retired. So once again, we have like three hundred and sixty-five on the standard plan and one on the buy-up. So, um, so that's how they get on that. Then, once they turn sixty-five, then they could be eligible for Medicare Part D and a, or Medicare Part F, Part G plant. Um, so that, so they're basically, whatever you're offering to the employees, the retirees have the option of taking, uh, if they've qualified for that. So it, they're, they're sort of in the same boat as the employees, except they don't pay individual premiums. So if there's a retiree that has just an individual coverage, they do not pay a premium. But if they have dependents on the plan, they end up having to pay the dependent premium. So they would pay employee spouse, even though as an employee, they would get it for free. Does that answer your question?
You do.
Thank you.
I just have a process question. I want to begin by thanking you for walking us through this and, at opportunity, to attend one of the employee information sessions. And, um, thanks to employees who showed up to ask questions. And thanks to the, I counted up. I think we've heard from more than a hundred employees on the Let's Talk comments line, and I've gotten dozens of additional messages. So I hope folks will keep sharing messages and perspectives, um, both from employees and retirees. But just a quick process question. Um, if you could sort of shine a light on how we went from the basic analysis that we, we want to, uh, assess cost-saving measures in health costs to where we've landed today, which is there's two pretty specific recommendations on the table, or a specific strategy on the table about how to save one-point-six million. Um, and, you know, and we don't have, at this point, there's, you know, exploring wellness models as additional cost-saving strategies, but that sort of isn't baked into...
Sure.
Where we're at. So just how did we go from big picture, we want to look at strategies into drilling into these?
Well, we're sort of, right now, kind of stuck in the Blue Cross. Because we're a Blue Cross and Blue Shield member, we're sort of stuck in their ecosystem to an extent. So there's really only so much we can do within the Blue Cross and Blue Shield system. So it's very hard for us to, like, give free healthcare at one place or to do some more innovative things. So, so we're looking, evaluating our relationship with Blue Cross and Blue Shield's one of the main things, uh, that... is one of the main things that we're doing. But we also did a lot of modeling. So we tried to figure out, how do we equitably make these changes? And I think the hardest thing, and you're going to probably hear about it, is not everybody's in the same boat. You have a very diverse amount of employees who have very different conditions. So you're, you're always running into, somebody's going to benefit and somebody's going to get hurt. So you're looking at, do we raise premiums? Well, if we raise premiums, you're really going to put the burden on most of the working employees. Whereas, so basically the premiums, everybody's sharing in the cost. Whereas if you start adjusting, let's say, the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums, you more affect the people who use the plan more than the light users. So you're, you're trying to balance that. You're also trying to balance, how do you tweak three separate plans equally? Do you, you know, do you do across-the-board raises where you affect? Because, because they're all different and, and, and they will affect employees differently. So do you, do an across-the-board change? Do you try to tweak one plan? Do you try to tweak the other? There's a lot of stuff that goes in, and I think what we basically came up with, in order to get that one point six million dollars, we're better off really restructuring how we design our plans as opposed to trying to tweak the existing plans that we have.
And where did the one point six come from?
So the one point six million dollars came from that we looked at our two-point, what we budgeted for fiscal year two thousand nineteen was we took the, at the end of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, we had twenty-six point five million dollars in costs. So we looked at our annual trend and what Blue Cross and Blue Shield was recommending, and we came up with that two point seven percent. Then in consultation with the manager.
Not two point seven percent.
Two point seven million, I'm sorry, yeah, right, excuse me. So then we broke that out to where the county would end up paying forty percent of that increase, and then the employee would then absorb the remaining sixty percent of that increase. So that's where we got the one point one million dollars and the one point six million dollars.
And, and again, we're, we're going to eat four percent of this. So if it's a ten percent increase, that's forty percent and sixty percent. And that's how, that's how we arrived at. And some of that, I was basing that on the two other jurisdictions I've been in that are counties in North Carolina, we found that we could typically absorb up to about four percent. Beyond that, we couldn't really afford it. And so what I would do every year is we had a, an insurance broker that helped us with it. We would sit down every year and say, give us options. You know, he'd come in and say, we're looking at a nine percent increase, whatever. And I'd say, give me options to get that down to four percent. And so that's what he would do, and he would tell you how much each option would save. And then we had a committee that would work through that and try to make those selections and make a recommendation to the board. And you may want to think about doing that, maybe have one or two commissioners on that in the future, along with staff. But, but that's basically what happens every year, because every year you're going to look at a nine or ten percent increase, and as Joe said, you cannot afford it. And so you're going to have to adjust the plan. And unfortunately, nobody wants to hear that, but that's what every business and every government has been facing for years. And the difference here is the county's been eating it, so people haven't noticed it. But, you know, what we're trying to say is, we just can't keep doing that, we can't afford it.
All right, other questions from commissioners?
Right now.
All right. Thank you for all the information. You know, these are, this is really important, a really, really important issue. Not easy decisions to make, but I think the information illuminates a lot of the different moving parts that drive the, you know, the different options that we have to look at. I do have one other question. If, you know, there is this, there's a very specific proposal here, but what if, what if the commissions, you know, what if the commission came down in a place of saying, look, we need to start, we know we need to start taking some steps to manage the costs, but we don't want to go this far right now.
Right.
How would, how would the, are there some in-between the status quo and the specific proposal in front of us?
Well, I think if you wanted to do that, is give us those ideas and we'll have Kurt and them cost it out.
Okay.
We don't use a broker on this. You actually have qualified staff people here that can crunch the numbers here. And so any scenario like that, in fact, I will mention to you that Kurt has some standalone. I don't know if you kept.
We do, we can, Max, if you could put the PowerPoint up, I can kind of show you.
We've actually done.
You've got a model that you can show how different parts of it.
We kind of show you, we didn't use these, but we looked at them.
So these are sort of the à la carte tweaks that you could do to the health plan to try to, I guess, recoup that money that you're looking at. So if you increase our, the prescription copays by ten dollars each, we're looking at a cost savings of about three hundred thousand dollars. And that's a very conservative, these are all very conservative estimates. So if you increase your premiums, let's say by forty-five percent, you could net, and this, this, this would basically get you your one point six million dollars. But if you increase premiums by forty-five percent, you could get approximately nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. I don't know if this is in your PowerPoint, this probably is not in your packet, so.
That's interesting.
I don't think it is, but I knew you had the chart.
No, that's the kind of stuff we need to see.
I wanted y'all to see this, that these are things that we considered.
I mean, we have a lot of different, different little tweaks that we can do. You can increase, if, I think the main ones are if you increase the out-of-pocket maximum by a thousand dollars, you can look to recoup about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, okay? And if you increase the deductibles by two hundred dollars for each plan, you look like you can get about one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in return.
See, oh, go ahead, go ahead. No, everybody got excited on the same time, go ahead.
You all go and then I'll follow up.
Okay, so, so one of my concerns, okay, I have, I have a few. But one of them is deductibles for lower-paid employees. Okay, to me, that's a big deal, okay? And when I, so if that's a big deal to me, and I look at this, and I know it's a big deal to them. If you're, I mean, a big difference if you're going up from six hundred to seven, seven fifty and you make, you know, thirty-five, forty thousand as, as opposed to making a hundred thousand or eighty thousand or, or above, right? Everybody knows that. I mean, I get head nods from everybody when you say that. But when I look at this, it doesn't return any money. So to me, that would be the, the least thing that I would want to, to do, because it has a big, big impact on lower-paid employees, and it only saves us a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars on a two hundred dollar move. And that two hundred dollars is net money. Anytime, we have to always remember, you know, which, you know, if you're buying a car, you're buying a car with net money, okay?
And again, I just.
Paying your bills, if you're paying an insurance, you're paying it with net money, not gross money.
And I just want to emphasize, we did not use these.
But this is great stuff.
None of this is in the plan.
Pardon me?
None of this is in the plan that we proposed to you. This was things we looked at, but we didn't use.
But we, but a couple of the plans do increase the deductibles. So what I'm saying is that, that looking at this, increasing the deductible by a substantial amount returns the least amount of money to, you see that? And, and greasing, you see what I'm saying? I mean, you're looking confused, but I think you'll get it in a minute. But two hundred dollars, increasing the deductible two hundred dollars, which I believe on a lower-paid team member is, is a lot. And it's only returning a hundred and nineteen thousand as opposed to increasing out-of-pocket, you know, a thousand dollars, you know, goes.
My question would be, do we have a similar sort of menu of other options? Like if we had an aggressive or robust wellness plan, what kind of cost savings that could yield? Or looking at dental and the costs there and?
Well, dental is pretty much self-funding, so, but dental is high. So we, our employees pay a very high dental rate, but they also get a very great dental benefit. So that's actually, that doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, that is a self-sufficient plan.
But it costs the county money.
No, no.
Costs no one any money.
We pay the claims out of the premiums that we collect, so that is.
Okay, we should put dental aside then.
That's why we leave dental out.
But what we are looking at for the future is, is that one of the drivers of why our premiums are so high on dental is we have a very high amount of orthodontics in there. So what Kurt and I have discussed is the possibility of maybe offering two different dental plans.
Sure.
One would be with a very low or none, or no orthodontics. And the other would be, you know, with, with a higher orthodontics. And that way, folks would have a much lower premium and cover the things they truly need if they, you know.
They don't need.
I mean, if you're older and you're not worried about kids' braces, you don't want to pay for a premium.
You don't want to pay for that, that's right.
A move like that would bring some savings to some employees.
Yes, that could feasibly lower their monthly premium, yes.
This is really helpful, that's sort of what I'm trying to drill down into is the full package of, if we were to look at the full menu of ways that we could tackle this problem, that would be really helpful data to have.
And the other thing I just want to reemphasize to you is, you'll have that opportunity every year, because every year, you know, we're going to have an increase. And so that's part of why I wanted you to see these, this menu, because we can come up with those and we can, you know, where we cost out those things for you so that then you can look at it. And then if you want to tweak it, Joe, like you're talking about, you can do that, you'll know what the impact is.
But I, I think I want to give you all the timeline though, so that we're all really clear. So basically, we need to have paperwork signed by Blue Cross and Blue Shield on October eighth. In order for us to get, they have to process what our plan is so that employees can get their cards by January first, two thousand nine, or two thousand nineteen. We're planning on holding open enrollment the last week of October, the first week, in the first two weeks of November. So that's sort of our timeline. I can talk to Blue Cross about that October eighth deadline, but we're sort of in that, we need to be making a decision sooner rather than later.
Well, actually, actually, I hear what you're saying. However, it's one point six million, and you'd also said that.
Well, and this is not, I want to back up a minute. This is not one point six million. Three hundred and forty-eight thousand of, of the one point six million is coming from the change in sale of leave, of annual leave.
Okay, all right, but the impact, okay, if the sale doesn't go through for a year.
No, I was, I was speaking of sale of leave.
Got it, got it, but if the sale of mission doesn't go through for a year.
Right.
You're saying we have to do this by October. How does that affect our fund balance? I'm, I'm saying we don't have to do it by October, because if we had to this coming year, that, that increase could come out of fund balance for one year. Is that true?
It could, if that's what you choose to do.
Because you, I mean, you're saying we have an October deadline, and we're sitting here talking about this in September.
We're going to, just the point is if we're going to make the change for this year, that's the timeframe we would have to.
That's right. But if you choose to stay with what you've got, yeah, it just means you would have to. And, and if you don't change the leave policy, then you would be looking.
It's a great discussion, I mean, all this.
Looking at one point six million dollars.
Okay.
It is a good discussion and important, but we do need to, we need to move on.
All right.
So the, let's do the board appointments. We've got vacancies on the Women's Commission, there's eleven vacancies. They have provided a list, the commission's provided a list of recommended appointees to us, which is the, the folks on this list in the information packet. So we could appoint all of them, and there'd still be a couple vacancies.
Make a motion, we appoint Humphries, Brock, Delagarza, Clemmons, She maker Hammond, and more.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. We now come to public comment. So if any members of the public would like to comment, now's the time to do it. You can speak to us about any issues other than things that we've already had public comment on earlier this evening. So you have three minutes, and, yeah, you can come up and just share your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Janet Crompton, and I'm retired. I spoke earlier, and I think I spoke too early, I was confused, I'm sorry. I just want to, a couple of things. When you talk about selling of the leave policy, I think most employees would, would say, eliminate that program completely to save our insurance. Secondly, I'm, I'm retired, that's where my, my concern is. I don't, I don't get those raises. My, my income would qualify me for Medicaid. I mean, I took, I took early retirement because I needed to get out to save my insurance. Things were going on in Buncombe County that, you know, people were being fired, people were losing, you know, it was an issue that a lot of people left when, when I left. And the biggest draw for that was the insurance. Mr. Whiteside, he said himself he gets a retirement package. Is, is yours affected by anybody else, is Mr. Whiteside?
This is not a time to ask questions to commissioners.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I also got, received a text from a retired employee that could not be here because he has MS. And he's in the same boat that I am. He said, if I lose my insurance or if they change this insurance, I can't afford my, my prescriptions. Please consider the retirees. We, again, we don't have the, we don't have the leave policy, the selling of the annual leave. We don't have the benefits, we don't have the longevity, we don't have the colas, we don't have any of that. We have a set salary or pension, that's it. And please just consider that. I, I don't understand why we can't just add a third column for retirees. We're going to be aging out anyway, we're going to be getting Medicaid. I'll be getting Medicaid in nine years, I'm one of the younger people that retired. Please just consider that for us. It, it's, it's a financial detriment for me and my family. And another thing is that my insurance, I just learned this at yesterday's meeting with Mr. Yule, my insurance is paid for, but I'm paying a family rate because I have to carry my husband, who's self-employed. It's, should I not have, should I not be allowed to pay just, there should be something, some allotment to just pay for him if mine's paid for? Because in essence, I don't get that benefit, mine, I'm not paid for. I'm paying for a family that comes out of my, my retirement check. And that, if you could consider that, something, you know, like that, I don't, I don't know if that's, I'd be willing to continue to pay it if you'll just keep my insurance the way it is. And I know that a lot of retirees feel the same way. And again, like I said, I just received a text, apparently, I didn't realize we were on TV. On television, and he thanked me for being here to speak for us, I'm sorry, I've gone over my time.
You're fine, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Chris Winslow, I'm from Weverville, North Carolina. I'd like to speak to you as, you cut me off already?
Thanks, Chris.
Good to see you, buddy.
Start over.
I'd like to speak to you as a current Buncombe County retiree about this vote to approve new county insurance plan. I have spoken to retirees who had no idea about the insurance changes that are going to be taking place because they did not get notified or they do not check the county website, and some of them even live out of state. This commission has many times spoken about the quality of life, and I ask you to consider the quality of life that you will be changing to your county retirees by forcing us to pay more out-of-pocket for healthcare. So many are living on fixed income. We work for the county not because it had the best pay, but because of good benefits that were available that keep changing and not in a good way. We look at being able to take care of ourselves and not to be a burden to, a burden on loved ones, family members, or anyone else. We have to count for and plan for every penny and where it goes because we do not get a cost of living increase, a pay raise, or even the opportunity to get promoted. What we receive from retirement each month is all that we will receive until social security starts, if it's still available. Forcing us to pay more for healthcare is taking money away from food, clothing, vehicle repair, which could force us to short-change bills. While some may be able to get some type of part-time employment to help in those areas, there are just as many, if not more, who cannot. I was informed that I would be receiving a twelve percent monthly premium savings, which sounds good, but in reality is no savings when my deductible is raised nine hundred dollars, and out-of-pocket maximum is raised twenty-three hundred, for a total of thirty-two hundred per year increase. We all are different, and we all take different paths in life and cannot be monetarily set when we retire. So I'm asking you, please, to show that you care about this county's retirees and our quality of life and exempt us from the new insurance changes. Because there's many of us who retired and took the retire, early retirement to take care of our spouses, an increase. An increase in this retirement will guarantee that I will have to keep working until I start drawing social security, because my monthly retirement does not cover everything. Nobody's does. I'm sure Mr. Whiteside's aware of that. What we receive when we retire is already accounted for, and where it's going to. So an increase in our premium, an increase in our out-of-pocket, we're lower what we're getting in retirement. And I understand the county needs to change, and I understand everybody needs to change. But look after your retirees, the ones that stayed with Buncombe County for those benefits. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
My name is Rosemary Kirkendall-Ross. I, too, retired from sheriff's office with over 20 years' service. And as a retiree, we were told that if we would take an early retirement, that it would save the county a lot of money. So a lot of us took that early retirement, thinking that we would have insurance until we can, you know, do better, or, you know, get on whatever. So I, too, ask you to reconsider, to look out for us. You know, we looked after the county, we didn't do that job because of the money, we did it because we wanted to, and we wanted to protect the county. And now we're hoping that y'all will protect us.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Yeldon.
It's great being interim county manager, you're able to give them some truth. You gave them the truth on the colon, and it come right back around and bit them in the butt, and they wouldn't listen to you. I hope they listen to you on this. You know, I sat here tonight, and I listened to a group of people come in here, and be on the agenda, and rake this board over the coals, because of something you didn't sign. And they said, oh, man, you know, we need to give money to the schools, and you just gave 30 million to the schools. Oh, I've lived in Buncombe for 30 years, and paid taxes for 30 years. I've paid taxes in Buncombe County for 71 years. You know, the government ought to do all this stuff about infrastructure. The stupid government builds houses back where they get flooded out and washed away, how many times? So the government doesn't do anything that's right. It's stupid when it works. And you know I'm right on that. Why would you build a house back? Why would you spend millions of dollars developing the riverfront that 1916 washed everything away? That's kind of stupid, if you ask me. Now, let's talk about the retirees. Take early retirement, we got to hire two people to have the job, we're paying insurance on two people, aren't we? Schoolteacher, starts teaching school at 22, they retire at 30 years, 52 they retire. So from 52 to 75, we're paying for two teachers in the school system to have one in the classroom, and we wonder why the cost of government's going up. Come on, guys, wake up. Because I don't, I don't have anything against the retirees, but I don't have any cola, I don't have any increase. And guess who's paying for all that insurance? Moi. I'm paying for it, you all are paying for it if you work, and if you've got a second job, you're paying for it, too. And now we're going to be looking at a tax increase to balance the budget, because we don't have commissioners that's got the guts to tell the truth. And look at the bottom line that you saw tonight. There's a train wreck coming. If you don't cut, you're going to have to cut. Now, I've got suggestions for you, you've only got 49 seconds. AB Tech, let them come do the wellness program over here. Aren't you training people over at AB Tech to do wellness programs? If you're not, you ought to start that program. They ought to do it for Buncombe County for free, because look what we give them. Talk about movie for MSD, I just talked to a public relations guy at GALL tonight. Small staff, MSD needs a movie showing what's going on with that wastewater treatment plant. I won't get into the details, but if you won't, ask me. Another one, you talk about a healthy environment, healthy eating. Don't we have one of the best culinary programs in the country at AB Tech? Well, why don't we get them over here to do snack bars? Let them do it for free as part of their education. Now, that saves AB Tech, that saves us. That's a win-win, gentlemen. Quit thinking behind that thing, get out here and think with us.
All right, thanks, Tom. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Tim Wallace, I'm from Fairview, and I got to tell you, I really appreciate that entire presentation on the healthcare program. My healthcare was $36,000 two years ago, so, because I'm a businessman, so I can appreciate the work you put into that, and I would love to have that. One thing I would say, though, is, we actually have so many different layers. If 2009 you were working here, you get to have the 95-5. If 2016 you're working here, you get to have your spouse on it, even if they have healthcare coverage from their own employer, but after that, they can't go on it. So it's just like, it's like, almost like a menu at a Chinese restaurant. But the other thing I want to talk about was transparency. I sat in a library board meeting this week. I truly appreciate our commission, and the allowance of having us comment. Whereas I went to a library meeting where 7% of our workforce is under these people, they're hiring a new director, and the public cannot comment. I was dumbfounded, especially after watching all of you all on videos. I would really recommend that you change the library's document for, you know, its beginning, to say that the public meetings follow the regulations, including public comment. I thank you very much.
All right, thank you. That's a very interesting idea. All right. I think we're done with public comment. Quick announcement, October 2nd, 5:00 PM, commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326. October 16th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326. And we do have a closed session, and could you please share with us what the topics are?
I believe we have a couple of closed sessions, is it just two?
It's two.
Okay. We have one pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to discuss a legal matter with retained counsel pertaining to the following lawsuits, County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skellington Green and Michael Green, 18 CBS, 025. And then we have another matter, which is pursuant to North Carolina, 143, 318.114, to discuss matters related to economic development matter.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hockaday. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We do not anticipate making any decisions when we come back out of closed session.